Good evening, I'm Carolyn Wright, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 12th day of October 2021. Pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergencies statewide requirement to wear masks in K-12 schools issued August 12th of this year, and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's guidance for K-12 schools, and the School Board's 2122 reopening plan adopted August 10th, 2021, it is determined that physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, there'll be limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis beginning shortly before this meeting. Members of the public, as always, will be able to observe this school board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. So we welcome all those joining us tonight in person or through electronic means. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Wright, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. I now ask all those present to please join me in a moment of silence. And now please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we now have our Vice Chair, Mrs. Melnick, to get us started this evening with the special recognition.
Tonight, we as a board are pleased to announce the school board recognition recipient for October 12th, 2021. This evening, we are honored to recognize Windsor Oaks Elementary School, which was named a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education for exemplary achievement gap closing. The Virginia Department of Education nominated Windsor Oaks for this award based on data that reflected the school's dedication to closing achievement gaps for students with disabilities and African-American students. The school is proud to focus on the needs of every child and every teacher, encouraging families to be partners in student success. These strategies were maintained during the COVID-19 school closures and implemented virtually on various digital platforms when necessary. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program honors public and private elementary, middle, and high schools where students achieve very high learning standards or are making notable improvements in closing achievement gaps. Windsor Oaks is only one of seven schools in Virginia to be named a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. Congratulations to all Windsor Oaks staff, students, and families on this momentous recognition. And a special thanks to Principal Dr. Sherry Archer for her unwavering dedication to her school and the division. Madam Chair, this concludes the recognitions for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that brings us to adoption of the agenda. Motion to approve...any modifications, first of all? All right, hearing none. Motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs in a second. Mrs. Hughes. All in favor, please show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you. So we are now ready for the Superintendent's Monthly Report. Welcome, Dr. Spence. Oh, there is none tonight. Is that right?
That's correct. Those are going to be the second monthly meetings. That's pursuant to some of the bylaw adjustments.
All right, but we still welcome you, and we'll be hearing more from you later. Okay, approval of meeting minutes, and this is the September 28th regular school board meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? Hearing none. Motion to approve. Mrs. Franklin in a second. Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you. And that brings us now to the public comments portion of our meeting. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K to 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Persons signed up to speak will be called up three at a time, and they should proceed to line up when their name is called. For speakers outside of school board chambers, division staff will bring the speakers into the hallway as appropriate. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by student speakers participating through Zoom or telephone. After the student speakers, in-person speakers will be called, followed by speakers participating through either means. Speakers should begin speaking once their name is called. As a reminder, each speaker has three minutes to present and may be given a 30-second warning before time expires. They are asked...it's recommended that they refer to the online time tracker to keep track of their time. Once the speaker's time has expired, speaker is asked to stop making remarks, and the next speaker will be cued to speak. If the speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online when called, the school board at its all discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comments section. In accordance with newly amended bylaws, the school board will suspend public comments at 8:00 to hold the information session of the meeting agenda and will return to public comments prior to the consent and action sessions of the meeting. Finally, the purpose of hearing public comments is for speakers to address the school board regarding matters relevant to pre-K to 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of this board and the school division. Comments must be in compliance with School Board Bylaw 147, and persons not called to the podium to address the school board are asked to be respectful of speakers, so the school board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each one's comments. The board reserves the right to maintain appropriate decorum and order in chambers and to take appropriate actions to restore order and allow the business of the board to continue without disruption. As always, the school board invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker of the evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to do our in-person student speakers first. We're going to start with Gianna Lathan, then Uri Amjeri, and then Zoe Davis.
Welcome. Just a moment.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure and an honor-
Let's ask you to pull that down a bit so we can hear you loud and clear.
Sorry. Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure and an honor to be able to speak at the VBCPS School Board Meeting tonight. My name is Gianna Lathan, and I'm a junior from Tallwood High School and the 2023 class president. Today, I'm here to talk about CRT, also commonly known as the Critical Race Theory Curriculum. The other day, in my AP US History class, we had a class discussion on Christopher Columbus. Why do we celebrate a colonizer who has caused thousands of indigenous people to die, convert to Christianity, and stripped away their culture simply for expansion? The reason is that at a young age, under the current curriculum, we are taught that he sailed the Ocean Blue and discovered America. We are teaching our children white lies under a white curriculum, not the truth. This in itself is growing hatred, not CRT. CRT teaches our youth that race is a social construct, that even if I'm lighter and you're darker, we are the same even if our skin color is different. The word "race" was not in documentation until the 16th century and around this time colonization and the transatlantic slave trade were occurring. This is the first documentation of when the word "race" was used in thousands of years of history. You may be wondering, why is this 16-year-old girl giving me a history lesson at a school board meeting? And that's because this history lesson was never taught to me until this year. Most of that brief history lesson I just shared was also learned on my own. My whole academic career, I have been taught lies about my people and how my people were treated in this country. Future generations of students deserve to learn the truth about the history of America. Students, including myself, constantly call this place our home. How can I feel safe and secure in my own home if I'm being taught that I can speak even with a sock in my mouth, and I'm being taught that I can run with an obstacle in front of me, and I'm being taught that what I learn is equal, but don't experience the same equality in society? You cannot expect students to grow and develop into leaders in our society if the truth is not being taught. To teach students that 2 plus 2 equals 4 and 5 plus 5 equals 10, then to not teach the truth and not teach students the correct history in America isn't helping them grow, it is teaching them ignorance about the things happening around them. The only way students can grow into model US citizens in this country is if we're taught the truth of our history and our future. The Critical Race Theory-
30 seconds.
-or CRT is our future and will help us get closer to a unified society. Currently, CRT is an optional college course that focuses on race being a social construct and regulated through the law. For some to come up here and to be blatant racism is more of a reason why CRT needs to be taught in our district. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Uri Amjeri.
Welcome.
Hello. I first wanted to say that my name is Uri Amjeri, and the mispronunciation of my name is not racist, it's just ignorant and wrong. I think that things like this just show the need for education of diverse practices in our school. The truth of past events that Europeans have played a large part in is not bad, even if it points towards negative consequences of what they have done and leads people towards negative beliefs of them. And if that is the case in what is being objected, the school board should at least present the facts, leaving the students to think for themselves instead of giving blatant bias statements such as capitalism is not racist. Next, capitalism is racist. It was built on the underdevelopment of...underdevelopment, genocide, and exploitation of majority world peoples. In no way is criticizing capitalism and what it was built on negative. It is just examining it and creating personal opinions on a system that has its positive and negative effects on society today. For me, if I was taught that capitalism was not racist and a perfect system, which I have, that would lead me to my own personal discomfort. This leads to the question of who the school board is even trying to benefit. Was the exploitation of my people, the people of the African diaspora justified? Is that what's being represented? This is an ever-going cycle that exists in our very own Hampton Roads area. I'm a black girl, often the only black girl in many of my classes. I went to Old Nation School, Edward E. Brickle Academy, Kemp's Landing, whatever people call it. And now I go to Prentissand High School, where everyone asks me, am I in the IB program? And that question usually goes from the assumption of my class or that I am well-spoken, and that goes to question why people think that I'm in the IB program. Is it my speech and the proximity to whiteness that my speech might have? That...when that goes to people's minds, that gives like... that black people aren't smart or black people are lazy when they see that these schools such as ODS and Prentissand's IB program have a huge lack of black students. And if you choose to ignore things such as systemic racism and the true reasons that those schools lack diversity, that's the things that are going to people's minds, that black people-
30 seconds.
-are lazy or that they are not smart. And will we acknowledge the effect of previously redlined areas and their education systems, life expectancy rates, and prominent race? In this class I'm taking, African-American history class, we had questions that did with disability and sexuality, some things that might not pertain to me, but I do recognize my privilege in that, and in no reason should race not be included.
And that is time. Madam Chair, Zoe Davis has not checked in, and Alexandra Fisher is not online. So we will proceed to our in-person speakers. We will start with Paula Chang, then Dan Chang, then Tara Chang.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hang on, I just got to get this pulled out. I was expecting the two more speakers. Okay, ready? I support the resolution on equity because that although the board says it wants to teach equity, often code for CRT, they claim to oppose racism. Well, I think often it gets taught in the Virginia Beach public schools. Superintendent denies CRT is taught in the schools, but is he speaking the truth? Let's see. The alphabet book A is for activist is or was in the school with Z not for zebra, but for zabatista, a socialist liberation army, and that sounds like CRT to me. Three months ago, Dr. Spence sat on a three-member panel called Advanced Equity Excellence. They labeled itself as equity, but they discussed critical race theory. So invested was this panel in critical race theory that they began with a review of laws in 23 states, which they objected to, labeling them as chilling because the laws are anti-racist, as listed on their own slides. The panel objected to laws preventing anyone from making a student feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological distress on account of his or her race or sex. They objected to laws preventing training, quote, "training teachers to recognize and rid themselves of unconscious biases." They objected to laws requiring teachers to teach social studies without giving deference to any one perspective. And they objected to laws preventing, and these are also quotes, educators from teaching students that an individual by virtue of their individual sex or race is inherently privileged, racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or subconsciously. And this sounds like CRT, and that is why I think it fits in the discussion tonight of this bill or this resolution. If Dr. Spence does not promote CRT, why is he on a panel objecting to it? Objecting to laws against it? Is there critical race theory in Virginia Beach schools? When the superintendent just sits on a panel which finds laws opposing CRT to be chilling, runs his schools with absolute secretive power handed to him by this board, formulates policy in a non-transparent Equity Council using statistically insignificant surveys to justify policies, then yes, we must rein him in because it defies logic to believe that when he says CRT is not taught. This resolution should pass as the start of necessary control. Also, on a slightly different subject, when I was nine, my father suggested I read Frick to Hugo's Les Misérables. To save explaining it to Ms. Anderson, Les Misérables is an 18th-century novel, the context of which is social injustice from government overreach.
30 seconds.
Technically, I was able to read it, but the question is, did I understand the implications of this classic? The point, your students are too young for exposure to the sexualizing pornographic and graphic material in your schools. You fail to protect students when you allow Dr. Spence's administration to protect these books in your library. You run and you whine to the press about raised voices, a foul word or gesture to which you're exposed, yet not a single word was said in opposition when you found out that this sexualized material was in the school.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, then Tara Chang, then Annie Palumbo.
Welcome.
Good evening. I speak tonight in support of Ms. Williams' resolution to clarify equity training and teaching. A resolution that is necessary, necessary but easily avoided had racial issues in our schools been handled by its leadership. A history of this resolution, in September 2020, the board approved School Board Policy 5-TAC-4 in preparation for the equity survey now being used to justify new policies that are going to change the education and how our students receive that. The survey was requested by Dr. Spence and Dr. Parrott, the Director of Equity and Inclusion and Chair of the Equity Council. The completion of the survey showed a participation rate of four thousandths of a percent of potential respondents in a non-scientific survey. The survey was approved by this board after speakers at that meeting gave assessments of the status of racism in Virginia Beach schools. Some quotes are: "implicit bias and structural inequality in the schools." "Students in VB schools deal with cultural incompetency by teachers." "VB schools do not teach enough about diversity." "VB schools treat students of different ethnicity unequal." These are damning statements regarding the status of racism in our schools, particularly as you had an Equity Council, including board members, for many years. Many board members spent decades teaching in the system. Did you not see this injustice in those decades? Superintendent Spence had led this school system for over seven years, and Dr. Parrott had led the closed-off and non-diversive Equity Council for over five years. The council, under Dr. Spence's guidance, put in place to root out racism in the schools, should not leave parents, citizens, and students frustrated by their own words from that board meeting. We should not need a resolution to clarify equity, but clearly we do. All students should already know they are seen as equal. This resolution must be passed, but what a reflection of failure of leadership. Over seven years of effective leadership, one would expect the levels of frustration to go down. There should not be a need for this resolution-
30 seconds.
...to clarify what the Equity Council, Dr. Spence, were to...what they were to be correcting. One should not see a school system that is...that they say is full of systemic racism. If the schools are...if these schools are filled with racism, then Dr. Spence has failed his leadership. He is now the face of racism in the Virginia Beach schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tara Chang, then Annie Palumbo, then Becky Hay.
Welcome.
I'll be telling a story to explain why I support Carolyn Weems' resolution. During World War II, a young boy survived the occupation of Shanghai by Japan. His father served as steward in the United States Navy, which required him to leave his wife and son behind in China, living in fear, hunger, and disease. After the war, he fled communism to the United States. This young boy grew to graduate William and Mary with a mathematics/physics degree, joined the Navy's Officer Candidate School in 1956, and rose to become the first naturalized Asian admiral. This young boy was my grandfather, Ming Chang. He overcame much, including a severe speech articulation impediment, who I actually proudly share with. So check your facts before you malign publicly a constituent, Dottie and Beverly. In a time prior to the Civil Rights Movement, he slowly moved up the ranks, something difficult for an Asian at the time. He earned that rank and honor through his determination to excel and was proud to blaze the trail for minorities coming behind him. Other contributions to his country was leading AIPAC, co-founding a US House of Representatives Caucus, K-PAC, and was one of the members of the Committee of 100, one of 100 most influential Asian-Americans. The reason why I discuss my grandfather is...was his approach to racism, which he saw in every race. He had complete appreciation for this country. When asked about racism, he would say, "America was the only place to which a peasant boy can rise up in the greatest military in the world to achieve the American dream." Kimberly Melnick. The Racial Healing Handbook, a book that maligns the United States to which contrasts my grandfather is the hill you are willing to die on, while America, the Constitution, these students and the rights of these parents are mine. As Senator Tim Scott says, heal me clearly. America is not a racist country. Approve this resolution. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Annie Palumbo, then Becky Hay, then Amber Thompson.
Welcome.
Good evening. Okay, so Virginia Code 182-370 states, "Any person who distributes child pornography will incur a Class 6 felony." The question of the night is who's going to jail? In our libraries, Bayside specifically and Lanstown, the book Gender Queer had been unleashed, had been found. Here's an excerpt from the...from the book. It's also available in our public libraries. To middle school, high school. I Xed out...I was not sure what to do at the last minute. I Xed out another portion of the book. This should not be...and are you looking at her to tell her to kick me out? This is inappropriate, because it is? It's in our libraries. You think it's inappropriate? Trenace Riggs thinks it's inappropriate. You can't do that. Okay, so everybody, Trenace Riggs thinks this is inappropriate. It is inappropriate. It's in our libraries, my friend. They like...the story's about a girl who wants to be a boy. Keep talking. I'm going to keep doing it. This like a pap smear. That's a lifesaving procedure. I don't know. I'm a woman. I've never experienced this. Talks about they'll never do that again, a pap smear. So is this what we want to be teaching our kids? Amazing, amazing. What's more amazing is listening to you tell me to stop. Somebody's getting arrested. No more slaps on the wrist. No more. I don't know where it came from. We don't know where it came from. When you're head of an organization, you're responsible. You could contract...you could contract trace kids all day long, tell where they're going to the bathroom or not, when they're going, but you don't know where the book Gender Queer came from, and The Bluest Eye, and there's a few others, The Lawn Boy. These are in our libraries, ladies and gentlemen, for your kids to be poisoned. I don't know what we are doing to our girls in society. It's traumatic enough being a teenager. Same book, likens a period to this. And this. I have 30 seconds. I'm going to stand here and shake my head. Because I don't get it.
30 seconds.
And then you're muzzling our kids all day, but you, Dottie Holtz, were seen two weeks ago walking in the hallway of this same building that you make everybody else wear masks in without your mask. Like I said, no more slaps on the wrists. We're going full force. Somebody is going to jail, and it's not going to be the parents that the National School Board Association has deemed domestic terrorists. You're the terrorists. You're the abusers.
And that is time.
Good evening.
Our next speaker is Becky Hay, then Amber Thompson, then Troy Jones.
Welcome. Library materials containing explicit sexual content should be taken out. Per the National Center of Sexual Exploitation, a longitudinal study of youth ages 10 to 15 found that intentional exposure to violent X-rated materials over time predicated about a six-fold increase in self-reported sexually aggressive behavior. Why would our schools want anything to do with contributing to this statistic? And yet, for example, we have a book on the 12th grade approved English list that details a father raping his 11-year-old daughter. Administration needs to audit all titles available to our students and discipline staff who have allowed explicit content in our schools. And as students have access through their school accounts to the public library system, this kind of content should also be blocked. Secondly, I'm here tonight to fully support Mrs. Weems' resolution to clarify equity teaching and training. She has worked very hard and has reached out to many people to create this respectful and thoughtful resolution. Nothing in this resolution should make any of you pause as it speaks to sustaining a learning environment that encourages unity, mutual respect, and personal responsibility. Critical race theory and its foundational parent, critical theory, are not specific curriculums, but rather a perspective and attitude on how to approach our society. Critical theory categorizes people by social groups and power structures and diminishes the individual. It uses language such as oppressor, racist, bias, privilege. This theory has a zero-sum value. For one group to gain power, another must lose power. There is no scenario in which everyone improves or experiences- There is no scenario in which everyone improves or experiences growth and success. Although administration repeatedly states CRT and its tenants are not in our curriculum, we have seen several examples in recent months where it's been incorporated into teacher training and student activities. Just yesterday, we sent a presentation for secondary social studies teachers which relied heavily on the article, "Making Inquiry Critical: Examining Power and Inequity in the Classroom." The article talks about its Marxist roots, states that social studies should be a natural home for critical thinking, critical theory, and critical pedagogy, and that there must be a focus on identifying unequal power relationships in society coupled with the goal of transforming unjust social relations. Critical theory lumps students into groups based on outward characteristics. It cares nothing about student potential and sees strengths, character, and affinities secondary to skin color, gender, and economic class. Mrs. Weems' resolution seeks to prevent this, as she wants students to thrive as unique individuals, not be boxed into social justice corner and taught activism over achievement. Mrs. Weems has served our district well, longer than any other current school board member, and her concerns and efforts should be applauded. You should all approve her resolution without reservation if students are who you truly seek to serve. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amber Thompson, Troy Jones, then Kathleen Slindy.
Welcome.
I'm not going to get into all the mumbo jumbo that is CRT. I believe we all truly know what it is, no matter how much we try to pretend it does not exist in our schools. We are told it doesn't exist in schools, then that we don't know the definition of CRT unless we have a degree in it, and then there was basically the ongoing attempt to silence parents. The idea of critical race theory is vague, however, at its core, it's just that, divisive. Our children should be taught history, not that we are inherently racist based on our skin color. We know our country's history and that slavery and other injustices existed. That's why we have learned about our past, so we don't repeat it. However, by indoctrinating our children with this ideology, we are going so far backwards that this belief system is manifesting into present-day segregation. We have schools now doing separate graduation ceremonies based on race. Is that really what we want for our country? I have a picture on my phone of my five-year-old visiting the Statue of Liberty this weekend. This statue was a gift of friendship from the people of France to the U.S. and is recognized as a universal symbol of freedom and democracy. That is what we should be instilling in our children, that we do live in the greatest country in the world, full of opportunity for all. I feel very lucky and I've lived a good life, but I don't attribute that to race or gender. My parents worked extremely hard to get where they are, and they instilled that in me as well. I don't think our experiences necessarily 100% determine our outcome, although they may define us in a sense, I think a lot of it is in the choices that we make as well. Obviously, that I'm, being that I'm an American, I understand difference, different cultures do not have the luxuries we do here in the U.S., such as freedom of speech, freedom to work, raise a family. Why are we teaching our kids the opposite based on race? The idea is ripping apart our country instead of bringing us together or showing our children that they can be anything they want to be. We are drawing a line in the sand. Instead of teaching our children to be accepting of everyone no matter race, this philosophy teaches children to look at issues with a racial lens. Rather than empowering children, this teaches them to focus on their skin color, how it holds them back, and how that, and how they are different. What this continues to ingrain is that your skin color oppresses you, and you're incapable of succeeding without massive transformation to the system. If we believe there are inequalities in these systems, then you are more than welcome to fight them, but I won't let you use my five-year-old child as a pawn. Using the idea that we are black first or white first is wrong, we are human first. There is nothing you can't do in this country due to race. I will not be intimidated or made to feel bad, because at the end of the day, none of us had a choice in the skin we were born into. No matter whether you believe it is being taught in our schools or not, we can simply put guidelines in place to ensure it does not continue. Several states have banned CRT curriculum, and it's time we followed suit here in Virginia Beach. I want our children to learn history and why we fight so hard to live by our constitution. If you can truly stand here today and tell me that you are as oppressed as someone living in the Jim Crow era, then I ask that you please pick up the rock that you are living under. I know racism still exists.
And that is time?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Troy Jones, then Kathleen Slindy, then Thomas Coent.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Troy Jones. My topic is critical race theory. Like to read some scripture, Isaiah 5:20, woe unto them that call evil good and good evil, that put darkness for light and light for darkness, that put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter, Luke 17:2. It were better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck, and he cast into the sea than that he should offend one of these little ones. The National School Board Association is weaponizing the federal government against law-abiding parents that have concerns for their children's well-being, referring to parents as domestic terrorists, but the schools did support Black Lives Matter and Antifa that are domestic terrorists. Our government is acting more like the Nazi Party of Adolf Hitler than a constitutional republic. AG Merrick Garland has a conflict of interest on CRT. He has a son-in-law involved with Panorama Education Group that allegedly utilizes CRT teaching. He has contracts with schools, school boards across the country. They have a $2.4 million contract with Virginia schools. Follow the money. Online topic by David Hodges, "The New Hitler Youth Movement: Critical Race Theory is Promoting Reverse Racism Through Classic Bolshevik-Style Dividing Counter-Tactics." CRT is nothing more than Karl Marx doctrine, Karl Marx worship Lucifer. There was a closed, video on closed session from Beaverton School District, Oregon Equity A-Bar Summit, saying teachers, teachers that don't conform to CRT versus true or real education are threatened to be fired. The following self-proclaimed educators, also referenced, are part of a movement that is building the 2021 version of the Hitler Youth Movement. Instead of these teachers engaging in workshops to discuss how to teach students how to congregate a sentence more efficiently or more effectively, work a math problem, they're indoctrinating each other on fake race theory so they can forward and more effectively help the anti-American element in this country to more effectively and permanently divide our children and teach them to hate people who don't look like them, as it is with the Democrat Party Teachers' Union.
Thirty seconds.
Today, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. would be an enemy of the state in Oregon as his teaching of judging a person by the content of their character as opposed to the color of their skin have been totally forsaken. And this is how the Holocaust began in Hitler's Germany and is now starting in America. I hope this wouldn't be said of our school board.
And that is time?
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, then Thomas Coent, then Carol Kinsey.
Welcome.
Good evening, all. My name is Kathleen Slindy and I serve as the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association, the union open to all employees of our public school system. The school board is the employer of our members and is responsible for the learning conditions of students and the working conditions of our employees, and I'm here to talk about some of this right now. At the moment, those conditions include some of the following challenges. Middle school workers, current, middle school currently works a nine-to-five schedule, making it difficult, if not impossible, to get to banking or legal institutions for necessary in-person transactions, and getting personally to do this is challenging because of the sub shortage. In many cases, our high school classes are above the 150-student ceiling, and this limit should be honored. Case, the greater the work, the greater workload is not sustainable. Case managers have students they cannot see due to conflicting schedules, and that's making compliance challenging. There is an extreme shortage of substitutes, as you know, for teachers, TAs, specialists, nurses, bus drivers, cafeteria, custodial staff, and this hurts everyone. Though it is mandated through, through Virginia law, teachers are losing planning time to cover classes due to sub shortages and to attend trainings and meetings. Mental health and wellness are being encouraged but also discouraged as employees hear conflicting messages about taking sick leave or appointments or illnesses. Self-care is very important. The bus issue is an issue for all of us. It's frustrating to everyone involved. There is no scheduled teacher workday until the grades are due on November 12th, which is a half day for students, giving teachers a half day for transitioning to quarter two and doing report cards. Additionally, elementary teachers will have to do parent conferences as Zooms, though no day is being given for this purpose. And additionally, classroom teachers are helping students adjust after a year and a half of COVID pivoting. The needs are many, the resources just cannot keep up. Those extra school counselors are still needed. To deal with issues like these, some school systems are having early dismissal one day a week, maybe a Wednesday or Friday. This gives staff three hours to work on non-student supervised work, including planning, IEP meetings, grading, and deep cleaning. Employees that all, however, employees at all levels are now leaving. Employees are posting resumes daily, seeking positions that allow for a life outside of work and weekends for family time instead of lesson planning and schoolwork. Your employees are ready to move on, and no one is preparing to take their place.
Thirty seconds.
As fewer university students enroll in education programs. Public education has problems, but there are solutions. I heard some of this from Dr. Saltnier earlier, and we're looking forward to seeing those implemented. The process is clearly not going to be easy or quick, but those who value public education know that we have value as partners at the table where decisions are made. VVA values public education. We will continue to stand up for and stand with the individuals who make it happen every day. Thank you.
That is time. Our next speaker is Thomas Coent, Carol Kinsey, and then Kathleen Brown.
Welcome.
Thank you. I stand tonight in support of the resolution to clarify equity, training, and teaching. School Board Policy 2-4 states, "The school board will be intentional in its efforts to replace factors that may lead to inequities, including racism, discrimination, harassment, and prejudice, with attitudes and behaviors that reflect acceptance, belonging, compassion, and so forth." In addition, Dr. Spence has stated publicly that our school system does not train nor teach critical race theory. Saying we do not teach CRT by that name is a semantic dodge, which ignores volumes of evidence showing that ideologies derived from CRT actually drive strategic plans, inform teacher training, shape curricula, and strongly influence what students are being taught. So if, in fact, CRT does not influence our training and teaching, then the proposed resolution, which simply spells out and prohibits certain racist ideas, actually supports and enhances Policy 2-4. If, in fact, the school board and school division reject all forms of unlawful discrimination and harassment as destructive to their core values and strategic goals as stated in Policy 2-4, then the idea is that any race is inherently superior or inferior to any other race, that anyone can be inherently racist, privileged, or oppressive based on skin color, or be held responsible for actions committed by others with the same skin color, or that moral character or worth is determined by skin color, or that the United States or capitalism is fundamentally or inherently racist, should be roundly rejected as unacceptable in any training or teacher, teaching offered in our school system, which is the purpose of this resolution. As a Christian, I believe that God created man in his own image. He did not create separate Indians, Irish, Nigerians, or Chinese. Because of his image in us, we are all members of one race, the human race, and each one of us has inherent dignity and value. I also believe that sin, which entered human history in the fall, caused humans to use race and ethnicity to elevate themselves over others and to justify oppressing and exploiting them on the basis of supposed inferiority, immorality, or incapacity for self-rule. As a minister of the gospel, I believe and have always taught that racism in any form is ungodly and absolutely sinful. The Bible is inclusive in declaring that all have sinned and come short of God's glory. So sin in every sort still exists in our world. The good news is that God loves the world regardless of ethnicity, sexual identity, or religion, and Jesus Christ died on the cross to pay for every sin. Anyone who believes in Jesus can be forgiven of every sin, have their hearts changed, and be given eternal life. Jesus can change our hearts so that we can have real loving unity in God's family while recognizing and valuing the limitless differences we see in each other. Please vote in favor of this resolution to ensure that we do not allow divisive training or teaching to inadvertently slip into our schools.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Carol Kinsey, Kathleen Brown, and then Teresa Salud.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Ms. Weems, for the resolution to clarify equity, training, and teaching, item 15B. I believe that clarification of this, at this time is pertinent, for in the past, the public has received mixed messages. Parents have a fundamental, fundamental right to be concerned about the content of curriculum. They should expect high-quality education for their children using high-quality support and resources which are clear, precise, and transparent. It has been stated by administration that it's not the case that educators are teaching in divisive ways, and these things are not happening in our schools, and that's a quote. Meanwhile, there's a wealth of information promoting this divisive curriculum, starting with Dr. James Lane, Superintendent of Public Instruction, and including the sites as GoOpenVirginia, EdEquityVirginia, Roadmap to Equity, School Board Adopted Equity Policy of 9/2020, Virginia Beach Reading Resources of 2/2019, Virginia Mandatory Training Earning Equity Badges, Racial Healing Handbook, SEL Lessons Presented as Games, Brain Pop videos, Third Grade Social Justice, books by Ibram Kendi, if I'm pronouncing that right, which demonized police, teachers commenting that communism is a wonderful thing. That was in our school, a teacher had said that. And just recently, a high school teacher making a disparaging comment about Christians in one of our high schools two weeks ago. Yet, this is not in our schools. Yes, teach the history, the resolution won't make it difficult to do that. Yes, have the conversations of being kind, inclusive, and culturally aware. Yes, study the racial issues of past and present times without being divisive. Have the students learn how to be upstanders, respectfully discussing with those who are behaving less than inclusive. You as well can be upstanders to choose a curriculum that is most beneficial to our students, one which lifts up and not tears down. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Brown, then Teresa Salud, then Kevin Manor.
Hi. I have so much to say, but I have 25% less time to say it. I do want to thank Carolyn Weems for supplying us with this resolution. I think this will go a long way to give parents the peace of mind that our kids are not being labeled by their skin color and only that. I would be surprised that anyone would vote against this resolution tonight. The resolution simply states that no race is superior or inferior, no one was inherently racist, and that moral character is not determined by skin color, and that capitalism is not going to be taught as racist. Really, though, we're also voting on whether or not the people sitting up here are lying. That's what's going on. Aaron Spence is on the record saying there's no CRT in the schools. If you guys vote no, all you are doing is proving that CRT is in the schools. And a lot of people ask what the definition of CRT is, and I've scaled it down a little bit. It creates categories of oppressors and oppressed based upon skill and color, seeks to solve inequalities, teaches that America is fundamentally racist, and teaches the American dream is in fact a racist dream that is working for money and being able to work towards your dream. So it's a master's level hypothesis, I don't have to tell any of you that, but the framework should not be coming down to the kids, because it is a master's level hypothesis, and Bell, who created it, also welcomed opposition to it. I want to bring up the book study at Lynn Haven Middle School using the Racial Healing Handbook amongst teachers, which was taxpayer-funded. On May 25th, Kim Melnick, you said in a quote, "This is the hill I'm willing to die on," end quote. That's correct, glad you agree with it. Let me read the hill that you're willing to die on, just a small excerpt from the Racial Healing Handbook handout. See yourself as part of the white group. Understand and begin to take responsibility for your power and privileges, part of the white group, such as acknowledging the historical roots of white supremacy and knowing that all white privilege you have is a result of that history and it's a real thing. That sounds like judging somebody on the color of their skin to me. Don't shake your head at me, it is. McAuliffe refuses to define CRT because he says it doesn't mean taught.
Thirty seconds.
You know it is, though, and so does he, but everybody knows that it's a nonpartisan issue. issue. Nobody wants CRT in the schools, nobody does. So you guys need to vote yes on this resolution, and you need to vote yes on it to prove to the parents that you are in fact not teaching CRT in the schools. And lastly, as a parent, I want to know what my plan is and your plan is for recourse when my kid comes home and he is being taught CRT.
And that is time.
Please think about that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Salud. Speaker number 13 is not here. Then will be Susan Hippen, and then Amy Salares.
Welcome.
Hello. So I just want to say that I am in full agreement with Carolyn Weems' resolution to clarify what is being taught. It is just putting on parameters and making the parents feel comfortable as to what their child is not learning through their education. And also, parents would be happier to know if this is being taught in the school systems, what are the consequences if the teacher continues to push CRT on the children? This would make us very elated because we want to make sure that the teachers are then removed and don't continue this. Don't teach anti-racism because that is just racism. Because what you don't know is I'm multiracial. I have white, I have Filipino, and I'm now an indigenous person. So I'm oppressed and an oppressor all at the same time. And what does that do to mixed family that has multiracial ethnic kids? That's wrong. And I just want to point out this other thing. Thomas More, Utopia, because my child isn't a part of the public school system because of this. And he read Utopia, a small excerpt, and he's only, he's almost 11. And he read it, and he said, "Mommy, that's communism." And I said, "Know it well, because it's coming to this country if they don't stop this." Now, equity cannot be achieved ever. I don't believe it, even with Thomas's More's Utopia. You can lead a child to education, but you can't make them participate. And it's only the parents who reinforce education as a priority in their home that makes all the difference. How are you going to change that? Parents have various levels of education. So therefore, I believe education doesn't stop when they leave school. It continues. I look for every opportunity when I have my child out and about with me-
Thirty seconds.
-to sit there and ask him questions, make him use his brain to, to compute different things, percentages. I ask him how, how much something will cost if you take 50% off, 25%. I make him know the difference between what amount of batteries is going to be cheaper in the long run. So this is where it, when you say-
And that is time.
-equity, it's never going to happen. I'm sorry.
Our next speaker is Susan Bates Hippen, then Amy Salares, then Barry Nolan.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a retired Navy Master Chief and a Gold Star Widow. Diversity, the practice or quality of including or involving people of a range of different social and ethnic backgrounds, different genders, social, sexual orientations, religions, and more. Diversity is what makes us unique. It is who we are, our background, personality, life experiences, and beliefs. My great-grandmother, Pennsylvania Dutch, by the way, used to say that the world would be a very boring place if we were all the same. Diversity can make some people uncomfortable, but you must face the differences in others to truly know who you are. So teaching about the taking of Native American lands in the name of civilization when there was existing structures and governments is vital. Teaching about lynching and mutilation of Emmett Till, a 14-year-old black boy whose only crime was whistling at a white girl. Teaching about why the Ku Klux Klan came into being in 1865, their terrorism against blacks, immigrants, Jews, Catholics, and Muslims is important. Teaching that Columbus killed, enslaved, robbed, and raped the Lakaiian people is important. History is not pretty. If taught in its entirety, it is not pleasant. A diversity policy should not be what cannot be taught. Diversity is inclusion. Our current diversity policy is clear and should not be changed. Bigotry, the obstinate or unreasonable attachment to a belief, opinion, or faction. It is ignorance in its crudest form. Banning books is wrong. It stifles enlightenment and is counterproductive to the, to the learning process. No one should ask to ban a book that they have not read. The Bible is full of sex, incest, wars, and murder. And I don't see anybody putting it on a, on a book of banned books, a list of banned books. Bigotry stifles. It stifles the learning environment. The behavior of some speakers in this forum is abhorrent, but the same behavior would have their kids in school sent to the principal's office.
Thirty seconds.
Let's bring civility back and be a positive example for our students. The election is November 2nd. Exercise your 15th, 19th, and 26th Amendment rights. By the way, it's the 150th anniversary of the 50th, or the 15th Amendment. Go vote and go Browns.
Our next speaker is Amy Salares, then Barry Nolan, then Jason Nixon.
Hi.
Welcome, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay. I'm asking this board to pass Mrs. Weems' resolution to clarify equity, training, and teaching. I am neither a domestic terrorist nor am I an extremist. I'm just a fed-up mom who's tired of the hypocrisy, lying, and racist teaching going on in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. First, I'm going to say the Virginia Code 18.2370 states, "Any person who distributes child pornography will incur a class six felony." The, the books that have been allowed in our K through 12 libraries are inappropriate and disgusting. I did not have the ability to print out certain pages because they are so inappropriate, I didn't even feel comfortable getting them printed out and bringing them here to a room full of adults. I can't imagine why they are in our elementary school, middle school, and high school classes. I'm not saying ban it, I'm not saying burn it, I'm saying getting it, get them out of the public school libraries. As for Mrs. Weems' resolution to clarify equity, training, and teaching, the teachings are offensive and inappropriate for a public school system. In the Racial Equity Lens webinar held recently, I was extremely disappointed to hear Dr. Spence say, "A little boy coming home asking his mom if he's mean because he is white is a teachable moment." I say it's a horrible moment. Any way you look at this, why is a child coming home from school asking, "Because he's white, why is he mean?" Telling students they're oppressed and their friends did the oppressing, telling students our schools, country, government is all based on racism, and that nothing matters except your, your skin color, is wrong. The moderator of this racial equity lens, I'm sorry I don't know her name, which was attended by Dr. Spence and Dr. Parrott, said, as she was chuckling, I might add, "One of the most freeing things white people can do right now is to say, 'Of course I'm racist.'" I have no words for how this offends me, just as it did Mrs. Weems, and I'm sure so many others. Mrs. Weems' resolution is one that's going to take out this offensive language. On an aside here, I think the whole curriculum should be taken out, but let's work on the offensive language first if that's what we have. Dr. Parrott, our Director of Diversity Inclusion, tells Mrs. Weems that the offensive language is only offensive to her, and that although she may see it as divisive, it is language we have to get comfortable using so we can become culturally competent. Again, I have no words, except maybe she needs to be removed from her position. Here's your opportunity to support Dr. Parrott, Dr. Spence, and the others pushing CRT. After the vote on this resolution, those of you who do not support the resolution, I think you should stand up, free yourself, admit that you are racist, and then you will be competent culturally. If you're unwilling to follow the teachings yourself, then you should not force teachers and students to follow it either. I tell you, I will not, and I will never say that. You need to support Mrs. Weems' resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barry Nolan, then Jason Nixon, then Sandra Ann Frazier.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. After numerous trustworthy sources made it abundantly clear that critical race theory was not and is not being taught in Virginia Public Schools, and after the failure of people ranting about CRT to point to any instances of it actually being taught in our public school curriculum, I expected tonight's resolution to clarify equity, training, and teaching would be another loony QAnon-style bit of delusion. But I was so glad to see that the two sides may in fact have some common ground, because the resolution says, "The school board acknowledges that racism still exists and is not acceptable." And it says that no race is inherently superior or inferior to any other race, and that an individual's moral character or worth is in no way determined by his or her race or skin color. So amen, brothers, write on, sisters, to that! And if you want to focus on that, I promise to bring some of my liberal friends to stand with you on the schoolhouse steps, hold hands, sing kumbaya, and chant those three sound bites. I might even be willing to wear one of those stupid red hats. But we also need to expand our common ground a bit by acknowledging some hard truths. The teaching of history and social studies in public schools should in part be about explaining how things came to be the way they are today. And if you cannot explain why things are the way they are in America or Virginia today without acknowledging some ugly truths, like the fact that Virginia, home to over 400,000 enslaved people at the time, stated in its Declaration of Secession, they were leaving the Union specifically over the issue of slavery. The document called northern efforts to curb chattel slavery oppressive, their word, to white slave owners, owning people, beating them as you please, selling their children into bondage, was viewed as bad things to do. How oppressive to those poor white slave owners. After the war ended and it's 6,000, 600,000 dead, there were Virginia's Jim Crow laws requiring segregation, the racial integrity laws forbidding marriage between whites and people with even one drop of Negro blood. The massive resistance laws requiring segregation and so much more, real stuff that happened to real people. So great. Let's start with that common ground and demonstrable facts, and let's say together that people are and should be equal, that those racial laws were awful and harmful, even though our peeps thought they were swell at the time, and we'll all be better off when we can agree that we were all created equal, and we should all be treated that way.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Jason Nixon, then Sandra Ann Frazier, then Jared Miller.
What are you guys doing today?
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here to speak. I'm not getting off on that racial stuff. What I'm trying to do, talk to you guys about is the inequality between genders. I know you guys passed a policy, I haven't seen the whole policy, but I saw in the AP Press where it said that you're lying, the students now be perfect, preferred by pronouns, as well as use bathrooms in locker rooms, and play sports on teams that align with a gender identity. I am the father of three children, three, eight, and 15. I am not comfortable with that. Now, if you guys want to be fair about this, and I do it in Charlottesville Public Schools, build bathrooms, build bathrooms, universal bathrooms, that the transgender community can be more, they're given more of a privacy, it keeps them from standing out to others. Also, too, the sports issue, I gave you guys a military standard PT test. Now, if the state of Virginia, which is the National Guard and the Air National Guard, and the federal government, which is the military, recognizes there is a standard between female and male, then how are we not recognizing that? That's, our governor is my chief in command, and he recognizes this. So how can we speak out against this? My children shouldn't have to grow up and go, "Oh, D-Dad, geez, I, I lost out my scholarship on a softball team because some guy just decided he wanted to be a woman now." There's a difference in science and makeup and genetics, and I think that people have to understand that. It's not fair for women, and women already have a hard time getting school scholarships. It's not fair for the women to be uprooted and taking their opportunities away from somebody that identifies to be as a female gender now, when they don't have the right parts, their male parts. We, we have stalls and bathrooms for reasons, males, they stand and go pee, right? There, there's an issue for this, and I, and I want to make sure that everybody is treated equally. There was another issue I had with the book curriculum. My daughter was reading Asserteth, which is a Hindu Buddhism book, and basically, I, I feel this, eastern religion should not be in honors English class. That's something that's taught in college. And if you want to go that route, then let's teach Catholicism, Judaism, Islam, let's teach it all.
Thirty seconds.
Because it's not fair to be teaching curriculums and having it all one-sided. So take with a grain of salt how I speak on this. I'm, I guess I'm a father of three, I'm raising my children by myself, and I'm looking out for their self-interest. And I appreciate you guys giving me the time to speak, and if there are any questions or anything, please don't hesitate to ask me right now.
Our next speaker is Sandra Ann Frazier, then Jared Miller, then Melissa Harum.
Welcome. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm here on a different matter than the CRT. I think you all know how we feel about that one. I'm calling, I'm here to speak about the books that are in the Virginia Beach Schools' library, as well as the public library, and I'll take that up with the city council. Three books in particular, thank you, Vicky Manning, for bringing this to our attention, and Laura Hughes, Gender Queer, Lawn Boy, and this one, The Bluest Eye, about a father raping his daughter. Prepared? Spence, open your ears. The following passages from the scene where Charlie, Pacola's father rapes her. This, this is one of, this is one of the scenes that is cited in challenges we came across in our research the most often. "The tenderness welled up in him, and he sank to his knees, his eyes on the foot of his daughter, crawling on all fours toward her. He raised his hand and caught the foot in an upward stroke. Pacola lost her balance and was about to careen to the floor. Charlie raised his other hand to her hips to save her from falling. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg. His mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stunned throat, was better than Pauline's easy laughter had been. The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and the doing of a wild and forbidden thing excited him, and a bolt of desire ran down his dentals, giving it length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding, all of this lust was a border of politeness." I don't know, border of politeness, I don't know. He wanted to excuse me for saying this, but [BLEEP] her. That's what it said in this book. It's a book that's in our public school library.
Yes, ma'am, profanity is, is-
Well, then it shouldn't be in our school public library, shouldn't.
For the, for the purpose of this meeting, ma'am, I just have to ask you to-
F you, then, F you, tenderly, but the tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her, and the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the own-
And, and ma'am, the other thing I have to rule on is, is-
This is in the book. This is in the book.
The description of a sexual act, we cannot-
This is in, if you can't stand to read it, why do you think high school kids should have to read it? No, I have 28 seconds.
Please proceed.
No, no. You are going to hear this. This is in the book.
I was just pointing out-
If our kids are being allowed to read this, you are going to hear it. I want to know what's on your computers. What do you guys, what do you people look at on your computer screens that you think this is appropriate in the public school library? We should not have to second-guess what you allow in the library. I will be back.
Our next speaker is Jared Miller, then Melissa Harum, then Amy Morris.
Welcome.
All right, all right. All right, good evening. I'm here today to speak on several topics, including the conduct of specific school board members and some of the recent decisions about clarifying equity training. I'll start with the good, because I feel that good things should be mentioned before bad things. Good choices and good deeds deserve recognition and encouragement. I'd like to thank the board members, Ms. Weems specifically, who decided to bring about this clarification on equity training policies that the following will not be taught in Virginia Beach schools. Originally, it was a part of my speech to read off, but everybody's already done that, so I'm just going to skip that part. So I would like to thank you for these clarifications and hope they will be permanently codified in your policies going forward. All right. I've also come to propose the following. In order to ensure the most transparent and accountable schools, teachers, and school board, live streaming, sorry, live streaming cameras should be installed in each classroom so that the public at large is able to monitor and know what is going on in their students' classrooms and what is actually being taught. The fact of the matter is that the school boards across the nation simply no longer have the trust of the people after what we saw over the last couple of years, and especially the time in the virtual classrooms. CRT and other unapproved theories, though not a part of the actual curriculum, are still pushed and spread by activist teachers and individuals. This has been a disturbing, disturbing and all-too-common occurrence nationwide. And with additional security measures and requiring appointments to access schools, it feels more like our children's schools are turning into prison-like facilities rather than the hallowed halls of education that welcome parents and parent participation. We parents are looked upon as a nuisance by the state. The teachers' unions, that's wrong. Not the teachers' unions, but another organization, the National School Board Administration, I believe, wanted the FBI to call parents who speak against such policies as CRT and anything else as domestic terrorists, which I find absolutely absurd. We in America, or we in Communist China? You tell me. Anyway, the final purpose for me being here today is to call out hypocrisy where I see it. Ms. Franklin, I watched you after the last meeting whining about how long the meetings were, and that was your reason for wanting to shorten or eliminate speaker times. You said you would be willing to split the meetings up, which sounds fair, good compromise. But you only suggested that after your policy was called out and after you sat there whining about it. Your mindset to cut into the civil rights of your constituents for your own selfish reasons is not only disturbing, it is unconscionable for somebody in your position. Because of your mentality, I'm again calling for your resignation.
Thirty seconds.
Ms. Holtz, I'm sure you've already seen this. This is a picture of you walking down the hallway a couple of weeks ago without a mask on. I heard you just coughing and hacking over there. What if you had COVID a couple of weeks ago, and now it's just starting to show symptoms? You were walking around the hallway exposing everybody. So I'm calling for your resignation, too. I'm just wondering, you know, if you don't have to follow your own rules, I'm just wondering, why should I? Why should anybody in here?
And that is time. Our next speaker is Melissa Harum. Amy Morris is not here. Then we'll go to Karen Schrenzventer, and then Vincent Smith.
Welcome. Good evening. I am the mother of seven children, and I am very concerned about the way our equity and inclusive training is being proposed. And so that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. I did want to start out just by saying that I think that at least everybody in my circle, so I'm just assuming that includes all of you, agree on many things. We do not want racism. We don't want bullying in our schools, and we don't want to see injustice for anyone. I think we can all agree on that. I think the issue comes in more that just the way we see that being achieved is different. So that's where we disagree on a lot of things. Just because we disagree doesn't mean that my perspective wants racism. That would be ridiculous. I don't know anybody who actually does. I'm not looking for injustice. Again, I don't know anybody who wants injustice. We want the best for all of our kids. So having a different perspective on how we go about it doesn't negate our common goals and interests. And we can look historically on how things turned out. We can look back in history on the way people have dealt with issues, whether it be racism, or financial burdens, or whatever it is, whatever the ills of the society could be. So on one hand, we have a long history of teaching good character and loving your neighbor as yourself. On the other hand, we have a system where we pit each other against each other. We call out the oppressor, and we call out the oppressed. And we know how that turns out. So historically, every society that has taught their people to value each individual person and to love each other like they love their selves has improved. I'm not saying that they've been perfect, but there's been vast improvement, whether it be for women, whether it be for minorities. It really doesn't matter who the hurting group is. They have improved their situation in life. However, every instance in history, every single one that has pitted people against each other, oppressor versus oppressed, has gone...
Thirty seconds.
To the way of communism, and communism leads to genocide. And I know that none of you want that. That's not what any of us want. So I think that we really just need to be celebrating our differences and not warring with one another. We need to take a path that doesn't promote racism and victimhood and entitlement and hatred for our country. We need to go back to character training and loving our neighbor as ourself.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Conrad Schrenzventer, then Vincent Smith, then Christopher Hollinger.
Welcome.
I've had a bit of a week. My Vegas Raiders are collapsing. I'll lose my job at month's end. Jimmy Frost publicly told Vincent Smith to find women my age that know me and asked them what their secret to avoiding me is, because if anyone would know, they would. And that's a rough one, because Jimmy Frost believes you're repulsive to women. Heed the expert opinion. At least I can come out here, though. We're on equity again. I know not all the board cares about this, but equity training is important. The core tenets of critical race theory hold that ill effects of racism aren't found just individually, but broadly throughout our laws and social planning. It's important for Virginia Beach youth to know this, because Virginia Beach is a textbook case of social inequity. Picture Virginia Beach in your mind. That image was built by White Flight from Norfolk and Portsmouth following massive resistance to desegregation. That White Flight incorporated the city in 1964. It built a racially suspect voting system. White Flight's population distribution changed property values, city infrastructure, residential zoning laws, and school planning. This stuff wasn't taught here when I could learn from it, and I graduated in 2005. And Burton Station, the historically black neighborhood of northwest in Virginia Beach, waited decades to 2014 for sewer and water services. Equity training tells us why. This fake fuss to Bennett reminds us that conservatives fully understand these concepts, but act woefully obtuse. Bannigan hardly has anything to do with CRT, but they manage to weaponize talking about race and discrimination, making it difficult to even bring them up lest their feelings get hurt. Conservatives here exemplify the worst parts of what they think liberals are regarding speech and intellectual diversity. This fake fuss is relevant with the book banning drive. On one hand, they generate fire, fury, and emotional distress over changes to speaker policy and believing they're being censored. On the other hand, they ban civil rights books like Good Trouble and Pieces by Pulitzer Prize winner Toni Morrison. The harp about the freedom to yank funds out of our schools in order to go private and in the same breath, try to dictate what exactly other kids can learn in public. Hip, oh, crits. So embrace equity training, and I made my point. And I don't need to flip you all off and curse you while being removed by the police to do so. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vincent Smith, then Christopher Hollinger, then Eric Torterice.
Yeah, I'm the person that he was talking about. Welcome. No 30-second warning, please. I am here in support of Agenda Item 15B, so... But please don't take offense if I speak critically of it. I have decades of experience in government writing policy, and I have some tongue-in-cheek friendly amendments you might want to include in it. In, under line one, you say the board shall refrain from... That's weak verbiage from a legal standpoint. You might want to change that to shall not train, teach, or promote just to avoid issues in the future. Under items E and F, I believe you should include racist or discriminatory in both of those lines. And I think you should add line three. The superintendent will appropriately administer progressive VP-CBS discipline policy to any member in violation of the above, because it has no teeth the way it is right now. It just basically says you don't like it. So I apologize for talking quick, because I've only got three minutes. I'm not going to discuss CRT from the aspect of what it is. Discuss the diversity regale in it. It is a good thing. But I can tell you from a long career of reading critically, let's critically read the title. Critical Race Theory. The first word in it is critical. It's being critical of the theory. But one thing I know from critical reading is that you need to remove all the adjectives and adverbs and read it again. It's race theory. Why would you even want to teach a race theory in your schools? Because if you're teaching a race theory, you are possibly opening the door to teaching more race theories. And there have been a lot of race theories through history that I think we could all agree on shouldn't be taught in the schools. But you're opening that door if you're doing it. I'm not standing here in judgment, but I think there's a lot of people out here who, you know, have already spoken to you about that. The books, I want to tell you that if that young lady that just spoke can't read a passage from a book that's in your curriculum in your own meeting by your own policy that you just revised last meeting, I think you really need to think hard about whether you should be putting that book into the hands of children. Maybe you also need to use FCC regulations as a litmus test. This meeting is broadcast, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm pretty sure that reading parts of these books would violate FCC regulations. So why would you want to put that book in the hands of a child? I've also heard people say that, well, what if we only allow the children to read the book with parental consent? Okay, so now you want to pick and choose which parental rights...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Now you want to pick and choose which parental rights need parental consent when you don't want parental consent to be required to clarify whether or not a child wants to change their gender? So you're picking and choosing which rights you want to admire and which rights you want to ignore. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Christopher Hollinger, then Eric Torterice, and then Maurice Hawkins.
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, and good evening. First thing I want to say this evening is I want to commend you all for the hard work that you did at the last meeting. It was very eye-opening for me to spend some time sitting in here watching the sausage being made with regards to all the policy revisions. I've spent a fair amount of time helping groups of field-grade officers try to edit by committee, and I know how hard it can be. You guys did a lot of tough work on that. I would submit to you that you might make your lives a little bit easier if you want to avoid having people think that you are trying to silence parental involvement at school board meetings. Then don't propose policies that start with lines like, "The school board reserves the right not to accept public comments at any meeting." If you don't start a policy off like that, we're going to be less inclined to think that you're trying to silence us. Just a technique, just a thought. A couple of comments on the consent agenda that you've got for tonight. I would submit to you that every month should be Bullying Prevention Month. I have a little bit of a beef, if you will, a personal issue about all these different affinity groups getting recognized every, you know, different month. I think it contributes to the balkanization of our society. And frankly, if we're trying to unify people and bring people together and calling for unity, I think reducing the number of X affinity group recognition month, X affinity group history month would help with that. Everybody is important. Everybody is included. And part of the whole idea of e pluribus unum is out of many, one. We should be striving to recognize and celebrate the things that bring us together, not the things that tear us apart. On that note, I do want to talk just briefly about the equity training that you all are doing with the teachers and ask that you support Ms. Weems' resolution for tonight. As a starting point, I would like to ask all of you to please stop insulting our intelligence by saying that CRT is not being taught in the school system around here, okay? Nobody is accusing anyone of having a class for fifth graders that says CRT 101, okay? We all understand that it is a framework for viewing the world. We all understand that it is a lens, it is a theory, it is a series of ways of looking at problems and solving them. Okay, I took a class in it my first year of law school. I grasped it very thoroughly. It's not that we think you're teaching CRT as an individual class. The problem is that all of your equity training that you are giving to your teachers is framing how they look at the world. You are expecting your teachers to adapt, and I'm sorry, adopt all of these worldviews that are articulated by people like Ibr Maxcandi and Ms. DeAngelo.
Thirty seconds.
And that is going to change the way they teach our kids, and that is exactly the problem. That is why we don't want it to be used as a way of helping your teachers view the world. If CRT is not influencing the way our teachers teach around here, then there should be no hesitation. Ms. Weems' resolution should pass without a second thought, because it won't cause you any problems. But if you see Ms. Weems' resolution as a problem that interferes with the way your teachers are teaching, then that's why we need it. That's why we need it.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Erica Torterice, Maurice Hawkins, and then Kim Bentley.
Welcome.
Hi, it's Erica Torterice. I'm saying no. I'm not giving you any more of my freedoms or my child's freedoms. There's a saying that we use in the school, and it's if you see something, say something. Well, I'm saying something because I see what you're doing. I'm calling out all of you bullies, because how much money is lining your pockets to bully parents and kids into having to give your child an unapproved vaccine? You're discriminating against one group of students in the high schools who play sports. It's a discrimination, is what you're doing. Stick something up your nose every week, or get a vaccine one time. Because that's what you're doing, is you're bullying these kids and these parents into making a choice. No parent wants to put their kid in that position. Because these kids who are getting the COVID shot, these people who are getting the COVID shot are also getting COVID still. So why are they not having to stick something up their nose weekly? It's unfair. It's uncalled for, and I'm not doing it. You want to talk about following the science? Well, here's some science for you to follow. This vaccine that you're giving causes myocarditis in the age group of boys who are having to make that choice. While you're pushing this poison into them, the COVID is 99.98% survivable. They don't need a vaccine. They're the healthiest population that you have out there. Why are you pushing that on them? It's a shame. You should all be ashamed of yourself for allowing this to occur. And don't shake your head at me, because you know that my child is more at risk of getting a heart disease he will have to live with for the rest of his life over getting a virus that he can survive in a week. So what I'm up here to say is, let's discuss what science are we really following? Is this political science that we're following? Because it surely not is the science of what has actually happened, because we know that the masks don't truly work. They're not stopping kids from getting sick. But yet we muzzle our kids day in and day out, sending them to school. And then you're making, take a vaccine to what, to prove a point, because you're getting federal money? Because that's what this is all about. What federal money you're getting and having to use to be able to back up and how you're using it. So as a parent, I'm saying, no, I will not do this anymore. I'm not letting my child do this. It is not okay. I don't know how you sleep at night, but if you can't handle this job...
And that is time.
Then you should think again about your position.
Our next speaker is Maurice Hawkins, then Kim Bentley, then Catherine Messenger.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Wry. My name is Maurice Hawkins, and I came to speak to this body tonight, because it was brought to my attention there is a movement of censorship that is afoot in the city of Virginia Beach. And I was taken aback by this movement of censorship in our fair city. And I started thinking to myself, where have I seen this before? Where have I heard this before? And I thought about 1894, the formation of the Daughters of the Confederacy, when one of the objectives, in addition to trying to build Confederate monuments after the South lost the war, they also wanted to affect curriculum, to put a different perspective on the reasons why the Civil War was fought. I also thought about 1933 Nazi Germany, when students were going to public schools, and they would burn books. And any book that did not reflect German values, those books were burned. books. And any book that did not reflect German values, those books were burned. Books written by people like Helen Keller, a disabled woman who achieved higher education status, who fought for women's voting rights and disability rights. So I thought about, this is a game that's being played in the city of Virginia Beach. And what is happening with this game is that it is converting this chamber into a battle space for culture wars, when we should be focused on the growth and development of our children. You see, the city of Virginia Beach doesn't have time for games like this. What we need is an august body that is focused on the academic progress of our children, and stop trying to manipulate information to fit worn-out anachronistic narratives like Critical Race Theory, or denying the science behind vaccines for COVID-19. I am a citizen of this city too, and I am sick and tired of the games. We need serious people on this body who are making decisions based off facts, logic, reason. We do not need people on this board carrying the twin swords of ignorance and intolerance and waging a war against our children. The line has been drawn. We will push back. We will stand up for our children. Our children deserve love, caring, compassion, understanding. And this school board, the majority of this school board is on the right track. There is a rambunctious, right-wing minority that wishes to do nothing but sow the seeds of dissent, chaos, and discord, and utilize their talking points and their soundbites on right-wing media to build up their standing and their political emphasis. Thank you, and have a good night.
Our next speaker is Kim Bentley, then Catherine Messenger. Speaker number 29 is not here, and then will be Merrill Rutledge.
Welcome.
With, uh, number one, with regards to mask and vaccine mandates, insisting on your rights without acknowledging your responsibilities isn't freedom, it's adolescence. Number two, Critical Race Theory is the White History Month. Some of you kept insisting you wanted, you just don't like the truth about your history. Number three, you trying to ban books from the curriculum is proof that your constant gripes about cancel culture are hollow, especially with regards to John Lewis's Good Trouble. You just don't like being reminded that some of y'all's parents and grandparents threw rocks and bottles of black kids just trying to go to school. Number four, by getting in such a lather when discussing the depth and nuance about the objectives realities of American history, it's proof in itself why Critical Race Theory is important to explore. My grandfather was a World War II and Korean War veteran, Staff Sergeant, US Army. He wasn't allowed access to the GI Bill. I'll give you two guesses. You're only going to need one. After the war, he wasn't allowed to bring his French white wife back to Virginia with his kids. I'll give you two guesses. You're only going to need one. The realities of our history need to be explored. Explaining why the inequities of access to the GI Bill, and why one person's parents were allowed to go to college, and my grandparents, my grandfather wasn't, also explains an economic disparity. By talking about that, not only does it explore the, the concept of equity, but it also explores why the economic critical, Critical Race Theory is, is in play today. Number five, it's always cliche to bring up Nazi comparisons of book burnings and political discussions, but it's good to keep in mind that the books Nazis burned were about gender studies and communism. If you find yourself in agreement with that, well, by refusing to get vaccinated and dying in record numbers from COVID, you're making the country more liberal by attrition. You're perpetuating your own great replacement conspiracy. So, thank you. In conclusion, Black Lives Matter, trans rights are human rights, and John Brown did nothing wrong.
Our next speaker is Catherine Messenger, then Merrill Rutledge, then Daphne Stagg.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm here as a concerned parent. I have two children-
And we need for you to lift your mask up, ma'am. Thank you.
I have two children in this district that go to school, and I'm here because of my youngest child that was just lotteryed into the Green Run Collegiate. He has worked very hard. He's very smart. They have been in session for less than two months.
We can't hear you through your mask. I know it's tempting to-
Okay, no, I'm not moving that down. He has been in school for less than two months, and the, he came to me about three weeks ago and told me that he had been in biology class. The teacher that was in there with the class actually excused them after they had finished their studies, and they had gone outside to a picnic table where they all witnessed a girl giving a boy inappropriate sexual behavior on the playground. And he came home and told me this, along with several other things that have happened in the past two months, in which I don't know if any of it has been addressed. And I guess I'm here because I want to know about the communication, the process. I know that what he witnessed is against the law. Do I call the police? I went to the principal. It's documented. And I would like to know the process. And as a concerned parent, and someone that holds schools to a certain degree, I, I would like to know my children are going to school and learning decent, decency, and not going to school and learning bad behavior like this. So I guess I would like to know the process.
So, ma'am, we, we cannot engage with you here, but we can certainly have outreach to you after the, you know, tomorrow. We'll get somebody. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Merrill Rutledge, then Daphne Stagg, then Shay Coleman.
Welcome. Thank you for the welcome. Can I pull this down, or can y'all hear me?
We can, we can just, yeah, just stay right.
Okay, thank you. When we are on our deathbed, we want to be surrounded by family. Family that loves us, cares for us, and we have helped them move on with their lives with strength, our wisdom, and with love and compassion. This is one of them time periods where we get that phone call, and it says that things have been turned to the worst on all sides, right or left. But one thing we do understand from all sides, we all love each other. We may not love our decisions, and we may be critical of each other. But the one thing we have done throughout time as a family, we have came together during hard times to make the best decision for our children. We all remember that. And at those timeframes, those decisions were hard too. And at timeframes, we talked to people, and we had a great conversation. Remember that. And the next day, we get the phone call, and somebody tells us they are gone. At those moments, we want to say, what did we do for our lives? What did we contribute? Do we want to be haunted with what we take away for safety? Or do we want to remember giving back smiles, love, and compassion through the times of crisis, through the times of pandemic? Right now, we seek the truth from all sides, not by political gain or political benefit, but in the best interest of our children to make the right decision while we are still here today. Tomorrow is not promised. And I hope that each and every one of you have the courage to say it's time to give back our kids the life that you have. We've all remembered also the timeframes when we was running home from a fight, and our parents closed the door and said, you go back out there and you fight.
Thirty seconds.
And that's exactly what we should be telling our children. Take off those masks. Don't worry about the mandate. You go back outside and you fight. That's what we remember, and that's what we want to remember in our last days. So why should we wait for the phone call to turn for the worst, instead of answering for our children for today for the better? So I hope those words touch your heart and your soul.
And that is time.
And God bless you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daphne Stagg, then Shay Coleman.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm just here to remind all of you that you voted to give Spence your authority to do whatever he wants without any school board oversight and no input from the parents. And I heard he put a regulation in effect last week that anybody could go in any bathrooms without any question asked. And I was wondering if you had read the article that came out today about the ninth grader that was raped in the bathroom after the boy walked in in a skirt behind her. He was convicted of two counts of sodomy. That was in February. And so I'm just wondering if you, you know, Spence told you guys that there's no CRT in schools, right? There's, there's no, you gave him authority to do all the regulations, and there's no CRT in schools? And I don't see any reason why you wouldn't sign the resolution if it's true. So I hope you all will sign the resolution because if, if not, we can all assume that he's lying. So that's all I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Shay Coleman.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, time and dedication that you have to our school system. A civil right is an enforceable right or privilege which if interfered with by another gives rise to an action for injury. Discrimination occurs when the civil rights of an individual are denied or interfered with because of the individual's membership in a particular group or class. Class is a group of people or things defined by one or more common attributes. It could be religion, race, gender, age, so on and so forth. The Reconstruction Era in the United States was a period following the Civil War in which the federal government attempted to pass laws aimed at helping victims of slavery, primarily African Americans. The most prominent civil rights legislation since Reconstruction is the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This contains federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, including pregnancy, and religion and employment, education, and access to public facilities and public accommodations such as restaurants and hotels. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 and subsequent legislation also declared a strong legislative policy against discrimination in public schools and colleges, which aided in desegregation. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination in federally funded programs. Any training for teachers, lessons for students, books, media that is based on race portraying, teaching, or defining one race as superior to another, or one beneath another, is discrimination under federal law. Any program, practice, training, lessons, curriculum, media, songs, videos, taught, produced, allowed within our public school system that focuses on race as a basis is discrimination, and it's a felony, and it's against the federal law. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker. We can move on to the online speakers. Our first speaker is William Makowitz. Please unmute.
Concerning Ms. Weems' proposal for the resolution to clarify equity training and teaching Critical Race Theory is here in Virginia Beach schools, anyone, including members of this board, superintendent, or any other administrator who is playing word gymnastics to say that it's not, is lying. Don't continue to insult the intelligence of Virginia Beach parents. Here's some direct examples. Videos from Brain Pop about Black Lives Matter protests of 2020 accessible by students make the point that the BLM protests were mostly peaceful despite several injuries, multiple deaths, and hundreds of millions of dollars of damage. They make the point that white silence is violence. They also praise the three women founders of BLM who have stated themselves that they are trained Marxists. There have been teacher training references with charts from Ibram X. Kendi. He's a leading proponent and driver of CRT. Teachers who don't take air quotes optional Department of Teaching and Learning Training based in Critical Race Theory cannot be promoted per the Virginia Beach Schools DTAL-sponsored specialization badges for teachers document. In a mandatory elementary school literacy teacher training, one of the speakers states that white people should admit, "Of course I'm racist." And she continues that if you growing up in a house that speaks French, you just speak French. She follows on to say that our society speaks racism. Multiple Virginia Beach teachers have publicly admitted to supporting the teaching of Critical Race Theory and the 1619 Project students, including John Cosimo, Green Run Assistant High School Principal, Angela Cosimo, Princess Anne High School Social Studies, Gabriel Wetmore, Tempsville High School Social Studies, and Nick Zenedril, Virginia Beach City Public School Social Students Instructional Specialist. And the Director of the Virginia Beach Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Laquise Parrott, tweeted in February to quote, "Kick off Black History Month with Ibram X. Kendi." The Calum High School counseling website, CheckToday, has a direct link to the discredited 1619 Project and the PBS's Tools for Anti-Racist Teaching. Now, why would any educator teach this to children as young as five or six years old? That one race is inherently superior or inferior? That anyone because of their race is inherently racist or oppressive? That an individual's moral worth is determined by his or her race? That the United States is fundamentally racist? And that capitalism is racist? The choice on this resolution is very simple. If Virginia Beach teachers are not being trained in Critical Race Theory under the guise of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and this board is committed that CRT will not be taught in our schools, as has been stated previously multiple times, then no member of this board should have any issue with approving Ms. Weems' resolution. If, however, teachers are being trained in CRT, CRT is already being taught and advocated for by certain Virginia Beach administrators and teachers, and-
And that is time. Our next speaker is Erica Scoffey. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hey, thanks for the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight. I'm going to try and be brief. I'm asking you to reject the resolution regarding the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. The policy was approved, what, like, a year ago? And I supported the policy then, and I still support it now. I'm not going to go through and get into all the misinformation because you've read the policy and you know what's in there and what's not in there. I do want to address the false narrative that a few angry speakers means that the majority of parents are upset. These same 15 people showing up at every meeting outraged about whatever nonsense, non-issue, mismaning posts on Facebook that week. They don't represent me or anyone I know, especially when it comes to issues of diversity and equity. The majority of parents don't feel a need to speak at board meetings because we agree with the decisions you make. We elected you because you represent our opinions, and you're doing a great job. Thanks, by the way, for all the important work you're doing for our children. It's not an easy time to be a board member, especially with colleagues undermining you at every turn, wasting everyone's time and resources. Think of all the work that could happen if you were able to focus on our kids and educators instead, like addressing the fact that teachers and staff are being overburdened and underappreciated like Dr. Saltoner addressed earlier at the workshop. We can't afford to lose any more teachers and bus drivers. So I hope you can get back to work soon. Thanks for hanging in. So I hope you can get back to work soon. Thanks for hanging in there. Good night.
Uh, speaker number three had to cancel, so we move on to Diana Howard. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Diana Howard and I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party and I'm in support of this resolution. This is a excellent opportunity for you to stand with the parents of, you know, their ch- and their children to say that we are not going to teach a theory that claims that we are all born with a conscious bias of racism and oppression, that identity politics are not going to be used in Virginia Beach schools. Can you hear me?
We can loud and clear.
Oh, okay. Um, so, even though there have been examples of some of this training being done to teachers and that some children are coming home and saying that, um, they feel like they have been accused of being an oppressor or being oppressed. This is your chance to say that you are going to stand against that and that you are going to take any, um, person that is, any teacher that is teaching this to task for what they're doing and not allow it. But anybody comes, excuse me?
Please go ahead.
There is only one race, the human race, and we must come together from different cultures. We must embrace our differences. We are a melting pot of America. And we must treat everybody equally and not give, um, special, not, not view everything through the the lens of racism because we are not a racist country. We have come a long way in this country and we need to embrace our culture as Americans. So please support the resolution and say to any teacher that if they are teaching anything like this to our children, that you will stand against them and prosecute that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Gerloff. Please unmute.
Welcome. Thank you. We do not have a good relationship. We talk and seven of you do not listen. One of these days you are going to figure out we have something in common and at that point our relationship will change. You will finally realize we all bleed the same color and that we all need to be on the same team. Fighting evil, united we stand, divided we fall. Here's a thought that I hope we can find common ground on. It has to do with administration structure in schools. Why do we have so many principals that are doctors these days? When I was in school, we had one principal without a PhD and one assistant principal and everything seemed to flow along smoothly. There were no problems that the dynamic duo couldn't handle. Over the past few years, I have noticed more and more principals are doctors and they have multiple assistant principals. It would seem that a more qualified doctor would not need so many assistants. Do these doctor principals get paid more money than other principals? Since these doctors have several assistant principals, doesn't that take money out of the budget that could go to the teachers who are actually in the trenches doing the majority of the important work like teaching our kids? The more administration, the more money is taken from the frontline and deserving workers. Speaking of doctors, why do we have a superintendent who is a doctor? Sometimes people get the wrong impression of doctors. They assume, and you know what that word means, doctors know more, so they follow blindly along and do not ask questions. Many of you are more qualified than Spence in making decisions for our kids. You have been in the trenches as teachers and teaching our kids, but you have forgotten who you are. You have forgotten and you doubt yourselves, so you follow that character. We are in a battle. It is not Republican versus Democrat. It is not left versus right. It is not white versus black. It is about good versus evil. We are all God's children and we are supposed to be on the same team fighting evil. This battle requires one to use our greatest weapon, our mind. It's about using your God-given common sense. Sadly, many are still on Tesla autopilot, following along, not using common sense. You know what happens when you are asleep at the wheel on autopilot? You eventually crash and burn. Wake up and start your engines, ladies. As long as you continue to place your opinions upon others and ignore the constitution, then parents will be continuing to speak out against you. We will continue to fight each other instead of fighting a real battle against evil. Thank you and have a good night.
Our next speaker is Patricia Glodzinski. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Pat Glodzinski and I am not a parent of any current students, but I am the parent of three very successful young adults who made it through the school system here in Virginia Beach. And I'm speaking tonight in support of the Virginia Beach Equity Policy as it stands. As I studied it in the summer, I realized that, um, it should fulfill the needs of the school board and our school system to, um, equitably afford, uh, students the, um, the information they need for, to, um, understand about equity. Um, I, um, I'm quite surprised actually tonight to hear what's going on, um, with people coming to, uh, criticize the school board for making an attempt to, um, plan, develop, and implement policies and practices and initiatives as well as reviewed by the school board of the school division's efforts to address issues of educational equity. This, I'm reading directly from your, um, purpose that you are looking to better our schools and, um, that each community member, regardless of background, deserves a rigorous and respectful learning and work environment where diversity is valued and used toward achieving positive academic and social outcomes. I believe that you have chosen the effort properly and I believe that you're, um, you're, that you, um, are making a, the decision properly for our schools and our children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Polara Adiki. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Polara, please unmute.
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I just heard what the last speaker said and she was saying how she approves of, you know, you guys are trying to teach equity. Well, that would be great if it actually was teaching equity, but it is racist and it is biased. So that cancels that whole conversation out. I want to point out, uh, two things. And, and I'm the last speaker as far as I know, so, and maybe unless there's people who've been added later. But if I am the last speaker, I want to, I want to leave an impression with people. First of all, with the, um, the speaker, former speaker who talked about the books that are in the library and how we shouldn't be banning, we shouldn't be canceling out, you know, other, other books uh, because the Bible mentions these things. Uh, it talks about sex. It talks about sodomy. Um, yes, it does, but it doesn't describe those acts in detail and it certainly doesn't advocate for them. It doesn't encourage them. It doesn't promote them versus the one, um, queer, whatever. Uh, I, I'm driving right now, so I have all my notes, um, in my car, but my, my speaking time came up now. But when you have cartoon pictures of two men engaging in oral sex and then describing how they feel, I, I pray to God that every single one of you can differentiate the two and the context that the information is given. And in the Bible, it doesn't describe those acts. It's, like I said, it doesn't certainly condone them. And when it says, um, sodomy in the King James Version, it says that the, the two, the sod, the, uh, people in Sodom wanted Abraham to bring the two angels out so that, that they could abuse them. It doesn't even say the word sodomize them, but that's implied. So please give us a break. Lastly, we have an issue because you all have already approved against the wishes of the majority of parents and concerned citizens. Uh, and you've done it under the auspices of protecting transgender students. We're going to let them go. We're going to affirm them by letting them go into the bathrooms. We're going to let them go into the locker rooms of the sex that they identify with. Parents, concerned citizens, votes do have consequences. So if we can't recall these school board members who continue to enforce abusive policies like this, then, and we can't get them out of the work system, then, uh, we need to vote them out. So when you have in Loudoun County, a young man who says he's a, uh, identifies as a girl and he could dresses, um, as a, a girl and goes in and sodomizes, I'll use that word sodomizes, AKA rapes someone. And now the Virginia General Assembly, which is majority liberal, just like this Karat School Board, uh, says, oh, principals don't need to record assault.
And that is time.
Do you know that that's the case? Vote and vote them out.
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
All right. Thank you all. So the information portion of our agenda, uh, and we have in waiting, uh, staff to present the environmental studies program implementation evaluation.
Good evening, Chair Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Noel Williams, a Program Evaluation Specialist in the Office of Research and Evaluation. Today, I will provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the year one evaluation of the Environmental Studies Program. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. In November two thousand eighteen, the school board approved the proposal for the Environmental Studies Program to open at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's Brock Environmental Center in September twenty twenty to grade eleven students. As part of the program, students take courses at their homeschool as well as at the Brock Center, either during the morning or the afternoon session. The program was designed to offer a comprehensive curriculum to students who are interested in environmental science and sustainability. Students have the opportunity to pursue three curriculum strands within the program of study. Sustainable economics and business innovation, social sustainability and environmental sustainability, and natural resource stewardship. Fieldwork at the center's Lynn Haven River location is an essential component of the program. The year one evaluation focused on how the program's implementation process compared to the proposal approved by the school board. Evaluation questions address the program's implementation, participant characteristics, progress towards goals and objectives, stakeholder perceptions, and actual costs compared to projected costs. Information for the evaluation came from the program proposal and other programmatic documentation. Data also came from the VB CPS data warehouse and interviews conducted in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one with the teaching coordinator, secondary science coordinator, and the executive director of secondary teaching and learning. Finally, data came from surveys from students and parents. The table in the slide displays the number of respondents and survey response rates. The program of study was implemented as scheduled and as proposed. Four program-specific courses were offered to eleventh grade students in the program. These courses included AP Environmental Science, Sustainability Core Concepts and Environmental Systems, Natural Resource Management, and Watershed Hydrology. All students were enrolled in all four cour- courses and performed well academically in all the courses. Program components also included the outdoor learning environment and use of scientific and or technological tools during fieldwork. Although the program opened as planned, students were unable to take full advantage of the Brock Environmental Center until February twenty twenty-one due to periods of virtual learning due to the pandemic. Even with this challenge, program components such as the classes, the Brock Center, the outdoor learning environment, and the tools were all viewed positively by both students and parents with ninety-eight to a hundred percent of respondents expressing satisfaction. Central to the program's success are the students that apply and enroll. Recruitment for the program included garnering interest by visiting all high schools in the division from November two thousand nineteen through January two thousand twenty. The Environmental Studies Program received sixty-seven applications for fifty open seats. Applicants that met the criteria were entered into a lottery. Criteria included academic prerequisites, teacher recommendations, and an essay displaying students' ability to problem solve and think creatively related to sustainability. The program offered admission to forty-eight students and forty-two enrolled at the beginning of the school year. Additional seats were not filled due to social distancing requirements related to the pandemic. By the end of the school year, forty-one students were enrolled in the program. Of the forty-one students enrolled, the majority were female and Caucasian. The current enrollment of the twenty twenty-one students mirrored the characteristics of the applicants. Students enrolled in the program represented all twelve high schools across the division. The largest percentages of students attended Cox and Calum High Schools. The Environmental Studies Program has one broad overarching goal of broadening students' understanding of sustainability. It aims to reach this goal through five objectives, objectives listed on the slide, including using the natural community to learn about environmental issues, service learning, integrating interdisciplinary instruction, as well as challenge-based collaborative and design-thinking learning. Finally, the program a- aims to establish collaborative agreements with institutions of higher education. The following slides will discuss the program's progress towards meeting these goals and objectives. When asked about the overall goal of the program, students and parents unanimously agreed that the program has broadened their or their child's understanding of sustainability. In addition, eighty-four percent of students and eighty percent of parents strongly agreed with the survey item. Students and parents unanimously agreed that the Environmental Studies Program provided place-based learning opportunities. These place-based learning opportunities are provided at the Brock Learning Center where students have the opportunity to participate in fieldwork in close proximity to the Chesapeake Bay. Students unanimously agreed that the Environmental Studies Program integrated learning across subject areas including policy, science, contemporary social issues, environmental issues, and economic issues. Sixty-eight percent of students strongly agreed with this statement and thirty-two percent agreed. To gauge whether the program incorporated challenge-based collaborative and dot design-thinking learning, students were asked two questions on the survey and parents were asked one. In the first graph, ninety-seven percent of students and a hundred percent of parents agreed that the program provided them or their child with rigorous and challenging learning experiences. As shown in the second graph, a hundred percent of students agreed that the program provided opportunities to be collaborative. The program has made progress on its goal of establishing collaborative agreements with several universities, including James Madison, Virginia Wesleyan, and Old Dominion, as well as the Virginia Tech Agricultural Extension. Other partnerships were established with numerous organizations, including nonprofits that are listed on the slide. Students' overall perceptions of the program were also assessed, including asking students and parents to indicate their overall satisfaction with the program. Strong positive results were found from both students and parents with satisfaction levels at a hundred percent. Seventy-six percent of students and eighty-eight percent of parents indicated they were very satisfied. A hundred percent of both students and parents agreed they would recommend the program to others, with over ninety percent strongly agreeing. Both students and parents agreed a hundred percent that the program met the students' learning needs. Finally, the evaluation compared the planning budget from the program proposal to the actual one-time startup expenses and the recurring operating expenses for the first year of implementation. When actual costs were analyzed, the one-time startup and year-one operating costs totaled just over two hundred and eighty-four thousand over the two years. The actual cost was seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars less than the proposed planning budget. The primary reason the total actual costs were less than the planning budget was because of a decrease in transportation costs as a result of virtual learning due to the COVID. of a decrease in transportation costs as a result of virtual learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is important to note that these costs do not include the Brock Environmental Center facility, which was made possible due to a donation to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. As a result of the year one evaluation, we have two recommendations. Recommendation number one, continue the Environmental Studies Program with modifications noted in recommendation number two. Recommendation number two, provide an additional staff member to support instruction and assist the program coordinator with logistics related to safety when working in the field, transportation concerns, and other duties as needed. Through the evaluation process, it became apparent that when an issue arose within the program, whether it was a student issue, a transportation issue, or a technology issue, the teaching coordinator had the responsibility of troubleshooting and solving the problem at the same time as instructing the class of twenty-five students. A primary concern is the staff-to-student ratio when students are conducting fieldwork at the Chesapeake Bay site, which is an integral component of the program. Currently, with just one staff member per class of up to twenty-five students, the ratio does not meet standards of operation with other programs or with VB CPS activities such as field trips. At this time, the program coordinator, Mr. Chris Freeman, will provide the administration's response.
Hi, and welcome.
Hello. We concur with the recommendation provided in the report and want to take the time to thank the School Board for the opportunity to create the Environmental Studies Program at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's Brock Environmental Center. This public-private partnership is the result of your support, the support of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, individuals within the school division, and with continued collaboration with our community partners. We are ever grateful for the support of Macon and Joan Brock, whose generosity created our state-of-the-art classroom. Our success is through student empowerment, creating proximity and access to the tenth living building in the world, to a rich array of community partnerships, to Pleasure House Point Natural Area as a living laboratory and an open-air classroom, and to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, whose inclusive efforts connects students to real-world, relevant work spanning six states and the District of Columbia. We look forward to continuing this exciting work and to growing this community-connected, immersive experience that is the Environmental Studies Program. We will now take questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you for those remarks. All right, we'll start with Mrs. Holtz, then Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. This is a relatively new program, so it would be students in tenth grade in spring that would apply for it, correct?
Yes.
How did they get to know about this?
So, in the first year of the, the program, we had the ability to go to schools and promote, prior to COVID. After that, during COVID, I was doing digital promotion, both to middle school and to high school. I, I was working very hard to get into every single tenth-grade classroom digitally, which, which we succeeded in, in doing, but also to make sure that we were looking and giving opportunities to people that were not just science-minded and, and that, that also maybe traditional school isn't working for. We, we worked outside of the typical traditional science venues and, and also promoted in gym classes as well, and, and promoted in, in that way through, through Zoom.
Thank you. Another question. On Slide six, you talked about establishing collaborative agreements with institutes of higher education. What exactly does that mean? Can they get credit for it?
So it, it's not like university credit. These are things like, right now, we have students that are in an architectural internship, and they are tomorrow, or sorry, Friday, going to Virginia Wesleyan with the architectural group, working with the staff there, and, and creating projects with Virginia Wesleyan to help give them a better understanding of some of the architectural design there and some of the work related at Virginia Wesleyan. And, and similar programs are, are taking place at, at ODU and other institutions.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Mrs. Williams, then Mrs. Melnick.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that was one of my questions, too. What exactly have we done as far as collaborating with higher, you know, education? Because I know Bay South High School has a great one with their medical, you know, academy, so I was just kind of wondering the same thing, so I'll look forward to some more details with that. I know at the elementary level, we have ecology clubs that are great. My granddaughter just joined one, and they're raising two thousand oysters and then are gonna let them go in May, and she's so excited. But do we have that at the middle school also, things that kind of, you know, transition into this program?
So, so yes, we do. The Chesapeake Bay Foundation and Lynn Haven River now both do oyster programs that, that go from, from elementary through high school.
Okay, good, so it's at every level.
And we are actually working very hard to have our students partner with elementary-age students to help as content experts with teachers, with SOL training, with MEWEs, meaningful watershed educational experiences with, with schools in Virginia Beach.
Okay, great, because I think that the earlier we expose them this, and they get so interested and excited, and then they can just, you know, go on through all the levels. Thank you so much for all the work that y'all are doing. Thanks.
I just want to make sure nobody else has a question, because mine's not a question. Mr. Freeman. So I know Mr. Freeman very well. My daughter was one of his students a decade ago, and everything that you see now, his love for the environment was evident a decade ago, and what, what you teach your students, what your students take from your class is immeasurable, and thank you for that. Thank you for helping students to love Mother Earth and to care for it and to protect it, and I, I'm really grateful for that. And I said this the last time you were here. If you don't follow Mr. Freeman on social media, you should. He's fabulous, and I learn something from you every day, so thank you. And I guess I'll ask you a question. Do you love it out there?
Thank you, and yes, absolutely. Just the walk to the center is a really amazing experience, that you never really know what you're gonna see, whether it's a diamondback terrapin, or, or a bald eagle flying overhead, or dolphins in, in the water that we saw last week. So it, it is, it is truly a magical, a magical place.
It's a gift, and it's part of our legacy as a board, and Dr. Spence, yours, and, and so it's a gift for us, too, so thank you.
Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Freeman, you were at the presentation for the PPM, the Performance and Planning Committee, and I gave you a shout out, or I gave you a boost. I just want to let you know that. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, and thank you for being the great ambassador for this program. You have certainly made an impression on the mayor's commission win, commissioned as well, and they, I had the opportunity to attend one of their meetings, and they spoke nothing but good about the works that you're doing with the students and with the program and how you brought them in. So thank you for being that great ambassador. Not only that, I serve on two other commissions, and this program keeps coming up along with your name. I serve on the Virginia Beach Strip Preservation. You're coming up there, and believe it or not, in the parks and wrecks, your name is coming in the program that you're doing, especially with the students. I am so proud of the program, and the students seem to be real excited about it. Keep up the good work, and thank you for being the positive ambassador for this program. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. That means the world.
And Dr. Spence.
Yeah, just, just quickly, I'm wondering, and I'm hoping that a copy of this evaluation can make its way over to our partners at the CBF so they can see the impact, because I know how important this is to them. And I mean, that is very impressive to see a hundred percent agreement across the board on those, on the value of the program for the folks who've just been into it and a very new program. Ms. Felton, thanks for mentioning the PPMC, because I'm gonna toss it to you for us to have in our next meeting, a discussion about the extra staff recommendation there and, and what we would recommend, and we'll talk about that then. And then my final comment, in addition to singing Mr. Freeman's praises, because if you guys have never watched him teach, he's an incredible teacher and a true asset to our community, is for you all to, to take some, the opportunity to go visit. It's a program that where the kids are outdoors, we can make it an easy opportunity for you to visit and see what they're doing, and if you haven't, again, you get the chance to see he and his, and his coworker teach, which they're truly remarkable, but to see these kids in this environment learning hands-on, it's really, it's an experience that will remind you of all the really good things that are actually happening in our school division. So I would really take that opportunity to get out and do that. It's really worth your time.
Thank you so much. And Deanna McDowell is the other teacher at our program, and she is amazing, y'all, just absolutely amazing. And so I hope that, that y'all come and, and get the chance to see her. She is extraordinary.
Well, we have Mrs. Holtz again.
Thank you. Today, there's such a high interest in environmental studies, and when we're talking about the survival of our planet, and I'm wondering, in the future, do you anticipate you be able to have more, more than fifty students in that studies? Because that seems like a small sum compared to our population.
So with, with this building space, we, we can have a hundred students total in the program, fifty juniors and fifty seniors, and the, the beauty of this program is that we're redefining where and how learning can happen. And so that, that expansion can, can, we can all talk about that in terms of how we expand into the community in, in non-traditional learning environments, and that would be a real exciting discussion to have, and there is absolutely opportunity for growth.
Mrs. Anderson.
So I would be very willing to have a discussion about how we can expand this program. I've been pushing for that for a long time, so, anyway, I, I feel like we definitely have a need for it, especially in the future of this planet. But the, the best part of this is that this is so unique for us to have. In fact, we're the only school division in the country, correct, at this time?
Correct.
And I, I hear that there are other school divisions that are thinking about, along the coast, that are thinking about coming up with this, so I'm sure there, there are places, they're, they're gonna come and see what you're doing so we can model and show off, but, but it is, this is just something that I think we need to, we need to get more out into the public to let them know that we are, we have something that is completely unique for our area, and, and we're definitely on the cusp edge of, of expand. I would love to be able to expand it. I would love to be able to see, be put into a, a major academy in our area, so I appreciate all that you do, and I don't think we can toot our horn enough on this.
Thank you.
I'm Mrs. Riggs.
Chris, I just want to thank you. We had the opportunity to go visit you last spring. I know that Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Holtz and I took that opportunity, and it was just an amazing experience. It didn't disappoint us at all, it just kind of made us so excited, and just to see our young kids, students, and young people get so involved in it, and it's such a need in our city. I can see them carrying this torch and working with flooding, and with our watershed in the Chesapeake Bay, all of those things are just so, so important. So it's, it's homegrown, you know, and I just so appreciate your enthusiasm and what you've been doing with them, so thank you so much. Thank you.
So I think that wraps things up for today, and we do look forward to an opportunity in the future that's within all the mitigations, but you have the beauty of, of the outdoors and your, so your, your academy program is more, let's say, less of a challenge with the pandemic, although you had your challenges and some of our other specialty programs, and so.
Well, our door is always open to y'all, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you today.
So that brings us to our next information item, V S B A Tidewater Region Chair Nomination. So it's my pleasure tonight to formally announce our colleague, Mrs. Felton's intent to seek the, the chair nomination for the V S B A Tidewater Region, and I know my colleagues and I are all aware, but the public may not be, that she has ably served as Vice Chair these past two years. So it's on for information tonight. This is part of the process with the intent of adding it to consent at our next meeting, and I just thought it would be appropriate to share briefly what the position entails. So the V S B A is divided up by geographic regions of the association designated by the V S B A Board of Directors to administer the work of the association and will be governed by the bylaws of the association. Regional officers are elected by members in the regions by N E L I, at the fall regional meeting, which will be associated with the upcoming V S B A convention. No regional officer shall be elected to serve more than one, two-year term in the same office. Nominations require approval by the majority of the School Board at duly-scheduled public School Board meeting, and requires the candidate's signature signifying a willingness to serve with the understanding of the duties outlined below. And if I may, serves as a member of the V S B A Board of Directors, representing all school boards in his/her respective region, promotes, B promotes activities and services of the association to the regional membership, C contacts board members in her respective region who've not attended a meeting after six months of election appointment, D contacts the board chairs in her respective region who've not participated at the state level in three to five years, talks about here, building a network and sense of ownership, encouraging V S B A membership, appointing a regional nominating committee, planning the regional spring network forum, which many of these colleagues of ours have attended through the years, presiding at the regional meetings, contacting board chairs through the usual means to solicit questions, concerns, comments, et cetera, a local spokesperson for the region, host the regional networking session during the V S B A Legislative Conference, which I alluded to moments ago, host a regional webinar, webinar meeting quarterly, contacts board chairs within the region on legislative issues during General Assembly, and that pretty much wraps it up. So again, this will, this will, asking your consideration in the selection of a chair for the V S B A Tidewater Region, and we will be scheduling this as a consent, a consent item next, in two, two weeks. Any, any comments or questions at this moment? Mrs. Melnick.
Mrs. Felton, your commitment to our board and to our professional organization is noted. You are, you are amazing. You always represent yourself well and our board well, and in two weeks, when it's on the consent agenda, I'll be honored to vote for you. Thank you for your commitment.
Mrs. Manning, and then Mrs. Anderson.
Yeah, just a quick question, Ms. Felton. I'm just trying to understand the process, so is it have to be, our board has to nominate you, and then are you, and then are they voted on at the V S B A Board, or how, how does that work?
Yes, my board has to get consent and vote that they, they established that they recommend me to become the regional president, so my board has to vote, vote before I can put my nomination in to the V S B A. You're welcome.
And Mrs. Anderson. I'd like to say, I totally agree with Ms. Melnick, and you are very well-suited for this job, and I wish you well, and I'll be in support of, of your nomination.
All right, then. We will move on. Legal Services Agreement Update. So a short recap, and while I'm speaking, we, there is a handout in, in the pile that was left with you all, so. So a quick, to put this in context, at the last meeting, it was, it was shared that the, this, this concerns the Legal Services Agreement presently renewed through the, through June of 2022. And city council, through their respective counterparts, have reached out both to division leadership and school board leadership, conveying the likely intent to not renew the agreement. And with that, it was understood that we had, there was a time element involved here with proceeding forward on different options. And it was also noted that Governance Committee is where this would land. And Mrs. Riggs and Mrs. Anderson were tasked with beginning the process and reaching, and seeking more information. We did have a previous presentation by Mrs. Lanetti at a September school board meeting. And so this handout is to help provide a little of that past context. And I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Riggs and Mrs. Anderson for the, for the update that you have for us. And I don't know how much of the background you want to cover again. Do you have any suggestions, advice on that?
Mrs. Tornada, do we have this PowerPoint available? We can pull this up quickly.
It might be helpful to do the PowerPoint first, and then I'll, if we, if it doesn't cover everything that I wanted to say, then, then I can always add more.
Again, just briefly, Camille Lanetti School Board Legal Counsel. As indicated, the city council has spoken with school board members, and they would like the school board to consider, and is their intent to not renew the Cooperative Agreement for Legal Services. As mentioned, the Cooperative Agreement for Legal Services has been an agreement between the city council and the school board. It's been in effect since 1994. What it did was allow you to bring in-house counsel here for you. It came after the grand jury indictment. And in the mid-'90s, it came out, and we brought in-house counsel with you inside to allow you to have immediate access to legal services from the city attorney's office. Since, of course, the idea at that time was that you would have cost-effective services, because much of your work is municipal in nature, similar to a city. You're running a large organization, and the city attorney's office has that expertise. As mentioned before, we have been providing legal counsel before we did in-house services, since I've seen opinions back as far as the '70s. So it's roughly been about 30 or 40 years' worth of services that have been provided. Again, this agreement allows us to provide in-house counsel for you. We examine each year where our hours are kept, as the council does. We do keep time sheets. I know exactly where our hours are spent, the types of work we do, and we come back to when we think we need to readjust the type of services and attorneys we need. Again, it is not technically a contract. It is an understanding between the two bodies as to how services are going to be in there. The document gets renewed every single year. This year, when it came up for renewal in June, I was informed that there were members of the city council that were, did not want to continue to be involved in this, and we're asking that the city, the school board then reevaluate it. At the city council's retreat in September, they did review this issue. And as I understand, they did speak with members of the school board about their intent not to renew that. But they understood at that time, it was going to be necessary for you as a body to make a determination how best to get your legal services in agreement, in alignment of what you needed in-house for them. So that's where this information started being pulled together for you. Again, as mentioned before, the types of services we provide, obviously you're familiar with me here at the school board, the school board committees, you see me most often. Technically, you have two, three attorneys assigned here full-time. As you know, since last December, my third attorney resigned. We did not fill that position, and our intent was to fill it in June. When we became aware that this agreement was not necessarily going to go through, we have not filled that position. So right now, you have two in-house attorneys, and you pull a half-attorney position from the rest of the city attorney's office. For you, you're most likely to see that in the real estate area. You've seen Becky Cuban over here, Debbie Bryant comes over. But there are other services that are provided from the various other attorneys in the city attorney's office. The other type of work you see in-house with us would be advice to school administration. That's not something you see, but that's what we do all day long. Obviously, there's student services, many, many areas of student services. Special education, if I before, as I mentioned at our last presentation in September, when I was brought over in the summer of 2000, it was indicated to me by your outside counsel at that time that you were spending between $250,000 and $350,000 a year for outside counsel just for legal services relevant to special education. Her suggestion was that I learn to do that. I did learn to do that. I brought that in-house. That is a cost you no longer pay. You have not paid for outside counsel since 2001. And that's one of the, probably the biggest cost-saving areas we can provide for you. I think if you speak to other school attorneys, you will see that that is a very, very expensive area. There are not very many of us in the Commonwealth of Virginia who know how to do this work, probably less than 50 of us. On there to pay for that would probably be in the $300,000 to $400,000 an hour area. So that is one area you really want to look at as to how you can keep that particular cost down. Human resources, we do a lot of work with human resource department. You'd only probably see that when we come to you with the grievances. But we spend a lot of time working with human resources, E O C, discrimination complaints, normal employment issues that come out. A typical year, we approve or review or draft you between 600 and 800 contracts a year. Again, you probably don't see most of those, but that's something that's we routinely do. Real estate land use, not our largest area, but can be between about 150, 200 hours a year. There are there is employment benefits, legislative works, subpoenas, freedom of invasion, and conflict of interest. When we have a full complement of the three and a half attorneys, we provide you at minimum 5,775 legal services hours. With two and a half attorneys, it's 4,125. We regularly exceed those amount of hours for you every single year. But it is set costs to you for doing that. You don't pay any additional costs for us if we work it longer than that. Again, structure, the city council approves, as we mentioned too, and I've mentioned, we've got the three and a half, three full-time attorneys, half an attorney. We currently have a paralegal and a legal secretary. And the cost for F Y 22 is $673,877. Last year, when we lost the half attorney, we did not charge you for that. This year, we will obviously not charge you for that. When we, when you pay through an interdepartmental transfer, which happens twice a year, we'll deduct the amount of services that you did not receive. Again, renewed annually. Governance Committee, I met with, along with other member staff, with Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Riggs to discuss some of the areas. I did put them in contact with other school attorneys in the area. Their recommendation, I'm sure they'll explain to you, is that you do hire in-house counsel for that, and that you then terminate the legal services agreement prior to F Y 23. That would be by July 1st. You would need to have that in place. Some of the reasons for that, I'm sure they'll explain it to you, is that appear to be cost prohibitive to hire outside law firm, private law firm. Similarly, school divisions also have in-house legal counsel, and they do hire outside counsel for those services that they cannot provide in-house for you. As all, some of my recommendation and the recommendation given to the superintendent, that you begin this process before your budget season. We will need to make some decisions, whether that's bringing me in-house or anyone else. You are, there are decisions you need to have in place and purchases that you will need to make prior to your budget year. So it's important that you begin that process very quickly. Other considerations that we've mentioned before, we've looked at, the city attorney's office has a rather expensive case management system. Would not be my recommendation that you use the same type of system. However, somehow, we do need to get all your files over to you. As I mentioned, you've got 30 or 40 years' worth of files. We need to get them to you, and we're working on a way to do that cost-effective. We don't want that to be a large expense for you. But that would be one area you need to figure out how that's going to happen. A legal research platform, Lexis, was a typical one that we would use. We're estimating about $6,000 a year. We have not attempted to negotiate a contract for this, but we believe that's roughly about what it would cost for three attorneys. Computers, network systems, we'd have to talk with you about transferring the ones that are currently that we're using from the city over here. You would have to procure the necessary computer systems, printer systems, or wiring from the city or from the school division to do that. We do know that one area that we don't have in-house support for right now, if you don't have the city attorney's office, would be the real estate. Again, as I mentioned, a typical year, that's somewhere between 150, 200 hours if you're using that much services. That'd be one area we would suggest you would want to make sure you have some money in the budget. It would not be worth it, in my opinion, for you to hire somebody just to did real estate, because 150, 200 hours is roughly about five weeks of work. It might be more cost-effective for you to get that from private counsel, in which case you need to budget some extra money. Roughly about $30,000 probably would cover the maximum that you would need for that. Also, we would not be recommending that you have the half-time attorney that we pay for. That's roughly about $85,000 worth of cost savings, so that is already built into your budget. So my suggestion is you use that money that you had built in for the half attorney for other expenses that you might have, which might cover your outside counsel, some of the other expenses we would incur. As mentioned, some of the actions that would have to happen, if you need to have in-house counsel, you are going to have to create an in-house legal services department. You will have to create those positions with human resources department. You will then have to determine how you're going to hire legal counsel and the staff that you will have. You probably need to authorize your superintendent to work with the city about necessary arrangements on transfer of files, its equipment, and some other things. Those things need to be worked out between the two bodies. You also would need to inform the city council of your intent not to renew the cooperative agreement. Again, I think they've mentioned that, but you would formally also have to agree to that, make sure that information went over. It will be necessary if you develop an M O U because of the past representation, the large amount of documentation information that the city attorney's office also has, if they're going to continue to represent the city council. If there's any potential conflict in the future, we would want you to write out some kind of M O U. So you were covering how that information was going to be handled. If there was any sharing of files that had to happen or was delayed, we'd want you to have that information in place. So those are some of the things that will need to be taken care of. So those are the types of things we discussed at the subcommittee, and some of that was mentioned to the governance committee. And I will turn this back over to the school board members that handled this.
And if I may just say first, that for the purpose of this discussion and this meeting, we're speaking in generic terms on positions, not specific personnel. With that, ladies.
So as was already stated, Tornace and I had the subcommittee meeting, and we reported to the governance committee that there are actually three scenarios that we could go with if, when this happens. The first one would be to retain outside counsel from an outside attorney's office, which we talked about that, and it's been explained that that probably would cost anywhere from $300 to $400 per hour. And we would have to even have somebody who did an oversight to make sure that we didn't go over budget on that. So we don't think that that's a good alternative for other reasons, also because we wouldn't have a dedicated legal advisor. We wouldn't have the experience or the institutional knowledge. A second alternative that we discussed was using the V S B A legal services. But we quickly realized that that wouldn't meet our needs also, because they really work with smaller school boards. And again, we wouldn't have someone available on a daily basis. And so the third alternative is the one that is being recommended by the governance committee. And that would be that we have our own attorney in-house. That would allow us to have a dedicated legal services with institutional knowledge devoted to legal situations that are found in schools, school boards, and school settings. And of course, we would have to hire, hire our own attorneys for this and have a negotiating team at that point to negotiate salaries and benefits, similar to the way we hire our superintendent and our auditor. So Tornace, Ms. Riggs has more information that she can share about the possible costs and the availability of legal counsel with school boards, schools, special ed, and legal services. So Ms. Riggs, I'll turn it over to you with your information now as well.
And one of the other things we were talking about, about having an in-house counsel group, is that we'd be pro with waiting for something to happen. In other words, this in-house counsel would already be, you know, there working on it, instead of having to wait to get counsel. So any problems that could be happening could already be worked on, because we already have our counsel in here. There's lots of information that our counsel, in-house counsel gives us that many of us need, not just us as on the school board, but Dr. Spence, our superintendent, administrators. Having that readily available is very important. And, you know, again, the amount of money, I did call Prince William and talked to their attorney, their in-house attorney, who was, by the way, retiring that week, at the end of that week. She had had 35 years of experience, not in Prince William, but before that, in Prince William, and she's been there five years, maybe. But many of the large school systems, or the school systems our size, Prince William, do have the in-house attorneys. It is very advantageous. It would, it would be very harmful for us not to have the in-house. So as Mrs. Anderson said, we, you know, the committee had met with the governance and suggested that we stick with an in-house rather than paying exorbitant prices to go and get a counsel every time we needed that. So I think we need a readily available, and having that knowledge is very important, and having it readily available to us, so.
Questions? We're going to be continuing this discussion later this evening, enclosed, but, yes, Mrs. Franklin.
And thank you, Ms. Lanetti. And I guess one of the questions I have is, would then, you had mentioned the superintendent and the auditor. Would then, would the legal team be our employees then?
Yes, that's the current recommendation.
Okay. I just want, I wanted to be clear on where they fit in the, in the structure. Thank you.
Anything else before we move, proceed forward?
I think that Dr. Spence had mentioned that this is something that we need to move quickly on, because we need to be thinking about this so that we can, he can put this as part of our budget. Dr. Spence, you want to speak over to this?
Yeah, no, that's correct. I mean, it's important to point out, it's already really in our budget. We already pay for this. There may be some additional costs that get incurred, but there are also some savings that can be incurred, as was pointed out. That said, we need to make sure we have it appropriately budgeted for. And so obviously, we would need to do that before the budget development season starts. We would need to have a decision from you all so that we can make sure that that happens. And that would allow us to make a transition July 1, which would give us time to handle some of these other issues that Ms. Lanetti talked about relative to the case management system, the files, and the M O U at the city. So gives us time, but a decision in the next month or two is going to be critically important for us to be able to put this into the budget.
And as was mentioned by Ms. Lanetti, both city council members have reached out to me. I know that they met with Dr. Spence or maybe the manager. And they're, they want to know something as soon as possible too, because of their budget. And so they are waiting to hear something about what we plan to do.
Mrs. Melnick?
And just a reminder, if it wasn't evident, I'm going to repeat it. We are incredibly lucky because of what we pay you and that you don't charge us by the hour. Looking at changing this formula is going to be, it's going to be a hefty, a hefty raise in what we do right now. So, and, and your knowledge on special ed alone is particularly.
We're keeping generic right now.
That's generic.
My recommendation, you need to make the best decision for you as a school board, whether that's me or somebody else. You need, but you need to plan it. You need time. And again, I think it's one of the committee says, we want to make sure you have adequate time to make the decision that best meets your needs so that you don't find yourself struggling at the end of the year to get things in place, and then unfortunately overrun your budget. We want to make sure you are adequately budgeting, you have the time to do what you need to do.
So before we move on, and I almost overlooked this. So what I would propose is that this be on, would it be a, what would be the format? We need to, as a board, consider or affirm that we will not pursue renewal of the legal services agreement and that we do want to, and that we would want to pursue the in-house counsel option.
I believe what you need to do is you're going to need to direct the superintendent and his staff to start developing the positions. Because you don't currently have as much, I'm a city employee. You don't have these positions in-house. You need to create those positions. You need to create a department. There are a couple of other things you need to, you will need to tell city council what your intent is, and then what your time period is. If for some reason you run past and you can't do July 1, you need to build it in. So I think, one, you make a decision that you want to create an in-house position, what positions you want. And then you would have, probably to direct the superintendent and- positions you want, and then you would have power to direct the superintendent and his staff. I have spoken with human resources, they said if you let them know, they'll start helping develop, they have job descriptions, they can start developing, that you would create those positions in-house for that, and then you can start building out your budget and the other things you need for that. So I think, one, you make the decision that you want in-house counsel, two, you direct the superintendent to come back to you with job positions, whatever you need, and then you start working on the other issues as you get that in place.
Can I ask a question, please? Would that mean that we would develop a motion or a resolution of some type for the next meeting?
I'm not sure it's a resolution, I think it would be a vote, this is a pretty unique situation, so I think it would be some kind of written thing, I think there's two or three things that you need to do, I'm not sure it's a resolution, there might be individual action items you would have to take. And you may only be starting it, you may have to come back. Like if you, if you direct the superintendent to come back with these positions, he might have to come back at a later date, tell you what those positions are and what he would call the department or what he would call the apartment, and the final budget would probably need to be approved at some point too, but that's-
So basically, we would need a motion then, at the next meeting, not this meeting, but the next meeting, by the next meeting to come up with a direction for Dr. Spence?
I believe that's what Dr. Spence needs.
Correct, and we can, and we can work on that.
I can work with the superintendent to put something together to, as an action item for the next meeting, if there is a consensus tonight to do that as the next step.
I don't see it getting all resolved at once, I think you get, need to get it moving and then figure out where you are, and then you can come back during the year and modify it depending on where you're going.
Okay. And that's what we'll do. Thank you. All right, consent agenda, we have a number of resolutions tonight, which will be read first, and then there's, there's bullying prevention month, disability history and awareness month, Filipino-American history month, there'll be LGBTQ plus history month, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and be new course interpersonal communications. We will read the res, I always have to think whether to ask for the motions first or read them first. I think we'll read them first and then we'll ask for the motion to approve, and, okay. So beginning with the first resolution.
Okay, the first res- The first resolution is Resolution for Bullying Prevention Month, October 2021. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over twenty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas students who are experiencing bullying are in an increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement and dropping out of school, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in many places on and off school grounds. And whereas it is important for Virginia Beach parents, students, school counselors, teachers and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has developed a policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminating, eliminate bullying behaviors. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools through sustained and dedicated efforts has implemented programs for all employees and students that recognizes a deep commitment at all levels to raise awareness of bullying and its prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of October 2021 as bullying prevention month in the city, in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and be it further resolved that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in Virginia Beach City Public Schools' classrooms during this time, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you. And next resolution?
The next resolution is for Disability History and Awareness Month. Whereas Americans, the Americans with Disability Act of nineteen ninety was founded on four principles: inclusion, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and equality of opportunity for all people with disabilities. And whereas the general, Virginia General Assembly has designated the month of October as Disability History and Awareness Month to increase public awareness and respect for persons with disabilities, to inform the public concerning their many contributions to society, and to emphasize the abilities and rights of persons with disabilities rather than their exceptionalities. And whereas public schools, institutions of higher education, the business community, civic organizations, and other interested entities are encouraged to promote Disability History and Awareness Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the Virginia Department of Education's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Virginia State Quality Profile reported the Virginia Public School Division served one hundred sixty-eight thousand forty-two students with disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Quality Profile reported the division served eight thousand fifty-eight students with disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools believes in having the highest expectations for students with disabilities and believes that students with disabilities make significant academic and social progress when educated as appropriate in general education environments. And whereas it is necessary to increase public awareness, knowledge and understanding of disabilities, the rights of persons with disabilities, and to foster a culture of mutual respect and equal opportunities for all in our schools, businesses and communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of October twenty twenty-one as Disability History and Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in the various school activities during Disability History and Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you. Third resolution?
Resolution for Filipino-American History Month, October twenty twenty-one. Whereas, one of the nation's greatest strengths is its vast adversity, which enables Americans to see the world from many viewpoints. And whereas Filipino-Americans are the second largest Asian-American group in the nation, and the city of Virginia Beach has the highest percentage of Filipino-Americans in Virginia. Whereas, through the study of their contributions, all students may find role models who participation, commitment and achievement embodies the American spirit and ideas. And whereas, the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognized the importance of multicultural diversity education within our school division. And whereas, the year twenty twenty-one marks the fiftieth anniversary of the first young Filipino peoples from West Convention, a meeting that took place at Seattle University in nineteen seventy-one and brought over three hundred young Filipino-American participants from the west coast of the U.S. This convention has been held as the beginning of the Filipino-American movement. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognized the month of October twenty twenty-one as Filipino-American History Month, whose theme is fifty years since the first young Filipino peoples from West Convention. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in various school activities during Filipino-American History Month. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twelfth day of October twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Next?
Resolution for LGBTQIA month. Whereas all students and youth should be able to attend school in a safe, inclusive environment free from discrimination, and that history has shown that the school board policy and regulations are effective in contributing to such environments. And whereas the school board amended five-seven policy to address protections of discrimination on the basis of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. And whereas the lack of awareness and understanding of issues facing LGBTQ students and youth has contributed to a higher rate of isolation, depression, suicidal ideations or attempts. And whereas the school board promotes the understanding and acceptance of and respect for LGBTQ students, children and youth, whereas the school board acknowledges that educational equity and non-discrimination policies specific to sexual orientation, gender identity and gender, gender expression are associated with students feeling more safe, lower levels of bullying, decreased incidence of harassment related to sexual orientation, and greater academic success. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach will continue to advocate for LGBTQ students and youth within our school division, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of October twenty twenty-one as LGBTQIA plus month, and be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages citizens to incorporate standards regarding age-appropriate, medically accurate, and culturally sensitive information on LGBTQIA plus issues into existing health and other appropriate curricula, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twelfth day of October twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mrs. Haltz, and the final resolution?
Whereas the school board recognizes that Native Americans have lived and thrived in North America from time immemorial, and whereas the school board recognizes that Indigenous people contribute to the academic, economic, and cultural success and well-being of the city of Virginia Beach and Commonwealth each and every day. And whereas the school board values the many contributions made to our community by Indigenous people and the deep cultural contributions that have substantially shaped the character of the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas the school board supports the resilience of Indigenous people to thrive and prosper to the present day, and whereas the school board promotes the closing of the equity gaps for Indigenous people through policies and practices that promote the culture, history, and their many contributions in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the second Monday in October twenty twenty-one as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and be it further resolved that all communities and our, all schools and our community are encouraged to support and celebrate the resilience of our tribal communities on Indigenous Peoples' Day, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the minutes of this board.
All right, motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Williams. All right, any, so all in favor, please show-
Madam Chair, a point of order, we already, we have another item on the consent agenda that we didn't mention.
Oh, I'll re, I'll remind-
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
I should, it's, it was quite some time ago, I'll just reiterate it, the new course interpersonal communications that was presented last week. And that is for the other, one of our other academies, the Business and Entrepreneur Program, as a reminder to everybody. All right, so with that, and we have the two, the motion on the floor has been seconded, so please show approval with a raised hand. Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote? Okay, thank you all. All right, action portion of the agenda, beginning with the personnel report and administrative appointments. Motion to approve? Mrs. Haltz, and a second, Mrs. Franklin. Any discussion? Okay, hearing, no, no, please show approval with a raised hand. Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote? Thank you, and Dr. Spence, do you have announcements for us?
I do, yes ma'am. I would like to recognize this evening Brittany Kearns. Brittany has served with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Salem High School, at Virginia Beach Middle School, she's served as a literacy coach at Princess Anne's High School, and most recently has been serving as instructional specialist of secondary English in the Department of Teaching and Learning. I'm pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next coordinator of secondary English in the Department of Teaching and Learning, so congratulations to Mrs. Kearns.
So that covers it? Yes, okay. All right, action item B, resolution to clarify equity training and teaching. Motion to approve? Mrs. Hughes? Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, it was in the agenda packet Friday, and then Ms. Franklin and I have called everybody to explain it.
It's on page seventy-two.
We can't, does anybody want it? Okay. All right, so we'll again ask for a motion to approve, Mrs. Williams, a second, Mrs. Hughes, all right, discussion? Mrs. Williams?
Thank you so much. This resolution has had a long journey, to say the least. I think that I, I originally tried to put it on the agenda last May, so about a half a year ago, and of course, that was after months and months of discussion and input from the public. So I thank you for the opportunity to put this on the action agenda this week. First, I want to thank all the parents that have been talking to us the last year, or fourteen, sixteen months, about this issue. I thank everybody that came out tonight, no matter what, where you land on this, I really appreciate the civil conversation and the comments that we had tonight. I always take parental input very seriously because I think parents are actually the experts when it comes to their children, and I think they should definitely have a seat at the table when it comes to education and what we're doing. Let me first just clear up a few things before I read the resolution, and that this resolution does not change the fact that we value diversity. In fact, it says it right on the, on the first line, how much we value diversity, and I think that was brought up tonight, so I just wanted to clarify that. This resolution does not change, diminish, replace the equity policy. We just read two resolutions tonight and voted on them that we also have policies for. Those resolutions didn't make the policy go away, they didn't change the policy, they didn't diminish it or expand it or, you know, negatively impacted in any way. So this does not have anything to do with that equity policy. And also, this does not have anything to do with teachers being able to teach history, the good, the bad, the ugly of American history. So I'm going to read the resolution now to make sure that everybody has the correct one, it was sent in your packet on Friday. Resolution to clarify equity training and teaching. Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, values diversity, promotes inclusiveness, and is committed to providing a learning environment where all students have access and opportunities to benefit from the high standards, support and resources required for a high-quality education. And whereas the school board values the uniqueness of each member of its staff, student population and community, and encourages individual and multiple perspectives. And whereas the school board must provide a clear and transparent understanding of the school division's positions and expectations regarding equity training, teaching and learning. And whereas the school board recognizes that individual and group perspectives on equity may differ and are subject to constitutional and other protections. Accordingly, the school board acknowledges that it cannot limit or discourage employees from researching, discussing, exploring books, media, publications, or materials rated to racial issues that divide rather than seek unity, but as that they do it on their own time and not on school property. And whereas the school board does acknowledge that while racism does still exist, it is not an acceptable practice within the VBCPS division. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, any school, school-based program, activity or entity that is operated, controlled, paid for, or under the jurisdiction of the school board shall refrain from training, teaching or promoting the following to students and employees. employees. A, that any race is inherently superior or inferior to any other race. B, that any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color is inherently racist, privileged, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. C, that any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color bears responsibility for the actions committed by other members of his or her race, skin color, or religion. D, an individual's moral character or worth is determined by his or her race or skin color. E, that the United States is a fundamentally and inherently racist country. F, that capitalism is racist. Two, that any violation of the above mentioned be reported to the superintendent or deputy through applicable policies, regulations, and procedures for resolving complaints by parents, students, or staff. Individuals reporting any alleged violation will not be retaliated against, adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this day in October 2021. So, and I do want to thank Mrs. Franklin, Mrs. Franklin and I worked on this. It is a product of a lot, a lot, a lot of thought, a lot of input from others, a lot of going back and forth. You know, it started out longer, if you remember, before I even brought it up in May, it, it had some items on there that, that we decided were best to leave off. We've changed a few words, and I'll go through those changes briefly, they're pretty obvious and self-explanatory, but, but we did want to, to tweak it after input from our colleagues in, in hopes that we would get, you know, support for this and that we, we could all support this policy. The main change is that we do not list critical race theory. That is not a word used in this document. The reason why, and we've heard it tonight, we've heard it so many times, is that critical race theory can be defined in many different ways, kind of depending on where you sit or stand on the issue. And so we just decided to, to leave that out, to make sure that we don't confuse anybody. And then also, we have heard over and over again that, you know, we don't teach critical race theory, we don't do it, and so we, we thought that was the, the smart route, route to go. Why are we bringing this up now, is a question that a couple people have, have asked. Well, the community has been talking about this, has been concerned about this for over a year. And a half a year, I brought the resolution forward to get, to get on the agenda. So I think it's, it's, it's time to go ahead and vote on it, and because it, it, it is on everybody's mind. It's here locally, it's statewide, and it's a, it's a national topic. And I know that, that some of you may think, well, we don't need this because we don't teach it, but we have example after example of ways that what, what we called in the past critical race theory, or tenants of critical race theory, have come into our curriculum, have come into our training, and have come into our instruction, and have come into assignments. So, and I know that some of my colleagues may have specific examples to add to the ones that, that we've already heard tonight. And it's interesting that, that on a webinar that I listened to at the end of the summer, a prominent author, and, and she's, she's very, she's an expert in, I think, culturally responsive practices, and her name just escapes me now. But she actually says CRT has made it into public education, so I, I thought that was kind of interesting. But, but anyway, so, so I think we do need this now because we do have examples, and parents are very concerned, and parents want to make sure that we codify and we assure them that if we say we're not teaching certain things, that actually we're not doing it. And some, a, a couple people have asked, you know, why didn't you wait till after the equity assessment? As you know, the equity assessment started, I think, be, before our retreat, and we got a report in July about the findings, and then another report is going to be the 28th of October. Many of us were very disappointed, as I'm sure Dr. Perret and Dr. Spence, that the participation in that survey was very low, especially for the parental part. We're probably going to ask for net, for more feedback, because I did talk with Dr. Perret, and she thought that would definitely be one of the recommendation, recommendations. So that assessment could be another year from now, by the time we collect data, by the time, you know, that they meet and everything. And again, this has nothing to do with the equity policy. So I think that, that to wait for that would just then prolong this for another six months, nine months, and perhaps even a year. Some of us have said before that, well, we don't write resolutions like this, we don't write resolution, resolutions that are negative. Well, school boards across the country have written resolutions, school boards across the country have written resolutions of what they don't do, and we can do that. We are not bound by doing every, everything exactly like we have done, I mean, if so, we wouldn't change anything. And so, and interestingly, I, I reached out to our former chair, which I know most of us supported for many, many years, most of you sitting here voted for Dan Edwards, and I, and I just kind of, out of curiosity, reached out to Dan and said, you know, am I off balance with this resolution? And, and he wrote back, quote unquote, "resolution totally appropriate for governance." So I think this is totally appropriate for us to be able to tell the public and reassure them what is or is not happening in the classroom. I think that parents, like I said, I, I, I trust their input, I listen to them, we've had many, many, many parents concerned about this, and, and I want to do something about it, I, I share, I share their concern. I know another, another comment is, how are we going to enforce this, especially in, in the first part where it says that we can't limit or discourage employees from researching, discussing, exploring books, media publications related to racial issues that divide? Well, that's the whole point. You can do anything you want to in your own time, we don't have to manage that, we don't have to, have to do anything in that situation. There's nothing to enforce because we are saying that teachers, you can do any kind of book club on your own time, you can study anything that has to do with racial issues on your own time. And again, this does not take away the teacher's ability to teach history and economics, I mean, we have a, we have an entrepreneurship, you know, academy, we're, we're teaching how to be business, you know, business folks. We're teaching capitalism, basically. So, so I just don't think that that's a valid reason. Again, this resolution was worked on tremendously, I have personally compromised on much of the language, on much of the A, B, C, D, E, F of this, and probably more so than, than usual, just for the fact of trying to get support from my colleagues. I hope that you will, will endorse this. If you go A through F, I don't see how anything really here is controversial, I think that we all want the same thing, and so I just, I just ask my colleagues to really consider voting for this resolution now, and, and I think the public will be, will be very happy, and I think also our teachers will be very happy to have some sort of guidance. I have heard from public, from people on both sides of the political aisle, I have heard from mostly parents and grandparents who aren't political at all, and that's why I think it's kind of interesting that all of a sudden, when people, you know, bring, when I bring this up, all of a sudden I'm being political, you know, but yet people that, you know, might not support this aren't being political, you know. I'm, I'm hearing from everybody, I'm hearing from teachers who, who have to call me again and say, I can't put this in writing, I'm uncomfortable with this training, but I can't put it in writing. So I think this goes, again, we are just codifying, we are saying exactly what we've been saying for over a year, that we're not teaching this, and so I really ask for the support. And I would like to now turn it to Jennifer Franklin, Ms. Franklin, because she helped with this, and, and I would like to have her thoughts and her share, if that's okay, Chair. Thank you so much, and, and thank you for all the colleagues who answer our phone calls because we did reach out to all 11, and I appreciate the ones that did reach back out to us, to share their input. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Franklin, are you available to speak?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to give you the option.
Am I next in queue? Okay. Well, again, thank you, Ms. Weems. I want to just say that we have put quite a bit of time into just having discussions, we actually sought out conversations from a lot of people in the community, including a legal scholar, who has said that, you know, CRT is not a K through 12 discussion, you know, he doesn't believe that it's happening in the schools in terms of the, the proper form of CRT. And, and we, and I quite frankly did also reach out to Mr. Edwards as well because he has been, quite frankly, a, a very good source of experience, information, and, and he did, as Ms. Weems said, actually say that the resolution was an appropriate way to do this. I have to say that I'm probably going to get pushback in, in both directions, but you know, based on my history here, I, I'm not, I typically have to vote my conscience and not politically. And so, what I want to say is that this is really an important topic for me in so many ways. You know, there were, a lot of you know, I was actually, you know, adopted, and so I have immigrated from Korea, and so oftentimes, even today, I have people say, where are you from, you know? And, you know, I, I typically just joke because I know what they're trying to ask me, and I say Pennsylvania, you know, and, and, you know, and, and so, for me, I definitely think that there are aspects of SEL that are important in our school system because there are appropriate things to ask, and there are some non-appropriate things to ask, and, and while I don't think that people do it in a way to be harmful, or spiteful, or mean, sometimes they just don't know. So I do want to say that I do think that there are aspects of SEL that are very important in the school. But I've heard from so many, and again, I, I echo the fact that a lot of you, not only on the board, have responded to us, but also so many in the community on, you know, on both sides of this issue. And I also agree that diversity, conversation, discussion, and having diversity is so important, and I love it. I love that we have diversity on the board, whether we agree with one another, we oftentimes bring out so many great points that somebody else might not think of. And so I've really thought hard about this resolution, I'm going to just say that, I want to say that out loud. Because I also, listening to a lot of the speakers, particularly the, the wonderful students that came out to speak, one thing that did concern me about that is that they felt like their, their great choices and the great, the, the great abilities they have were, were looked at because, and, because of the color of their skin. And I really want to say that that concerns me because, you know, there are some things that I've learned, being a minority growing up, and somebody said that, you know, that Virginia Beach is not very diverse, well, I grew up in a, in a town that was not diverse at all, I was literally the only Asian, so, at least for a little while, there were some as I grew older, but, but for a while I was the only Asian, and there was a time where I, I really, I felt embarrassed about that. I only wanted to fit in, I only wanted that. And when I came to Hampton Roads, and the Filipino community actually was such a large part of this community, I, I understood what it meant to be a part of something, I really got that, and, and I didn't stand out any longer, and I was accepted, and nobody, you know, looked, stared at me when I walked into a room. So I understand that we have pockets of racism, and people, and, and quite frankly, if we're all honest with ourselves, we judge people every day, we judge them based on how they're dressed, or if they're, or tattooed, or, you know, whatever the case may be, we, we judge people all the time. What I want for this division, though, is I want an environment that nobody feels a certain way because of the color of their skin, or nobody feels a, a certain way because they're concerned about, you know, what are, what, what is happening today. We have, you know, we have had a messy history, America has had a messy history, but I would say that every country, every race has had a messy history. It doesn't matter who you are, the people that have built this country and built other countries were all human, and they have had a messy past, and while they were great leaders, it was messy, they're human beings, and, and it concerns me because as an immigrant, I am so thankful to be in the United States, I have to tell you that right now. I serve my country for that reason, and it does concern me that we are possibly teaching situations where, where, you know, the country is, is still in a place, and I'm, and again, we wanted to recognize that racism does still exist, I can attest to that every single day, but that we're in a country that we're working through those issues, that we are, that we currently are, are better off than we were at one point, and I, I think that everybody should be able to say that we are better off than we were, and it's great that we're having these discussions. I love having discussions with people that don't agree with me, I love it, I think it's important. I think it's important to help them understand where I'm coming from, and I think it's important for people to understand, or me to understand where someone else is coming from. And so, although I know that I'm probably going to get a lot of pushback, I have to say that based on my experience in life, and just my experience, you know, being in this board, because I got to tell you, I love this division too. I love this country, and I love this division, and our country has had a mystery history, and we're not a perfect division, and this is not a perfect resolution, but what I can say is, overall, we are a great country, we are an amazing division, I see things every single day that I'm just so proud to be a part of. And I just think it's important to create, as I said six months ago, to create a framework that we do have something in place, and I want to just thank Ms. Riggs, because we had a discussion about a certain policy, and I think that will be very helpful, so thank you for, for bringing that up, because I, I know that's something we're going to look at as well, which I think will be very helpful. But with that said, I, I, you know, I went back and forth because I did hear the, everybody that I spoke to, and I, I appreciate the feedback from this board, and I heard everybody, I heard the comments from the, the public, but after weighing everything, I have to ask if you would just think about this, be open-minded, not look at this politically. For me, this is not a political statement, and know that Ms. Weems and I have put a lot of time into putting this together in a way that was hoping to be palatable for everybody, and not offensive to anybody, and, and if, if it offends anybody, I'm, I personally am very sorry. It was never meant for that intent, it was only meant to be viewed in a way that we can come to an agreement, that we need a framework because there are certain things that have happened, even though we're not doing CRT in schools, teaching CRT. You know, there are things, situations where sometimes things happen, and in a large division, things happened in the military, I said that to Dr. Spence. I, you know, it, it's hard, everybody is a human being and has, makes personal choices, and sometimes they don't make the best choices, and, and we understand that, and this is not meant to demean, or, or try to be uber-controlling, I think it's just a framework that allows people to understand what we're hoping to accomplish, and that is, you know, an opportunity for all students to get a great education in this division, no matter who they are, no matter what they look like, and no matter where they came from, everybody deserves a wonderful education in the Virginia Beach Division. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick.
So, I was ready to just move on with the vote until you spoke, and so, um, very beginning of this resolution is fine, until you get to, I'm so sorry. Um, the school board recognizes individual and group perspectives.
Oh, Mrs. Melnick, we can't hear you.
Equity?
Yeah, I'm having it.
I didn't, I didn't, no one called me either. Um.
This isn't, this isn't right, it's, um.
It's the same one, it's just I've marked out what's not there.
Okay, first of all, let, let's start at the beginning. Here's part of the problem. The people that come and speak, and some members of this board have used some of the, of, they, they use CRT, and they have assigned CRT to SEL, you, you called it SEL from the very beginning, so there's a problem right now. So now we have critical race theory, we have social-emotional learning, social-emotional learning equals equity, it's all lumped into something that's all, all together according to some people. And you said a few things that, you know, raised my eyebrows, you, you talked about judgments, you talked about, the, the people still have judgments, that there's, that racism exists, you said, we are not teaching CRT. You said, we are not teaching CRT. You said, this is not a perfect resolution. And you said that this resolution will not take away. What you said was no one, you don't want anyone to feel a certain way. This resolution is not going to take away the way a person feels. And if if we were really listening tonight um and we take out the the parent side of this just for a moment, take out all the parents that spoke tonight and focus on the two students that came tonight. And you listen to what they had to say, something that was real to them. Now imagine being their teacher. And imagine having to say to a student, I'm sorry, we can't talk about that. I'm sorry, that's important to you, but we can't talk about that. Because that is viewed by some people in this community or a resolution that was passed by the school board as being CRT. And now you have to shut down discussion in our classrooms. So I've also heard parents, the same parents that spoke out against this, I mean, that spoke in favor of this resolution, as asking us to teach reading, writing, math, and critical thinking. And what we saw tonight from those students was critical thinking. Whether you agreed with them, whether anybody agreed with them, it was critical thinking from two really incredibly right students who thought differently than you. I mean, and and that is okay. And that's a teacher's job. My second problem is the outrage that's occurring right now with our teachers. And don't think it's not, because I've heard from some of them. And that is limiting teachers' ability to research, read, discuss. I'm so sorry, my eyes are so bad. And it says, it cannot happen on our school grounds. Just think about that for a second. Who gets to decide what is acceptable for teachers to read, discuss, research on school property? We have a brand-new course right now, an African-American history course that these teachers are loving to teach, and their teachers and their students are loving the coursework. One of my dearest friends teaches that class, and out of fear, video records it now because of situations like this. We had parents talking about the book banning and wanting to prosecute. They want the names of the people that approved a book. She said, someone is going to jail. And this is where this is going. There's no end to this. This is only the beginning of of what? And let me remind you, we are experiencing a national teacher shortage. It was stated tonight that our teachers are tired, that they're June tired, and it's October. This is the stuff that's gonna drive people out in droves, and I would not want to teach for a division that has outlined something like this in a resolution. I'll just end with this. This resolution is stating that we won't do something we already aren't doing. Mrs. Mrs. Franklin said that straight away. She said, this is not a perfect resolution. We are not teaching CRT. I like conversation, discussion. There are judgments. There is racism. Those are all things you said. So I'm gonna remind you. This resolution is stating that we won't do something that we already aren't doing. The fact is, we have a clear equity policy that talks about what the board believes in. An outstanding education for every single child in this division. And that we have made the commitment to ensuring that happens. Policy affects change, not resolutions.
Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Anderson, and we have you now in the queue, Mrs. Hughes.
So I want to echo something that Ms. Weems said um on this topic. I I have supported culturally responsive practices since it was introduced to me probably early on in in being on this board. And, you know, I remember Dr. Cashwell's presentations about it, and, you know, I thought, wow, this is great. I really like what she had to say. We need to include diversity in our curriculum, in what we in what we do, in our books, and we need to make sure that we have different perspectives representative and different cultures represented. And I thought, this is great. Yes, absolutely. And I have supported that. I also agree with Ms. Hippen when she was speaking, that that we need to be teaching all history. You know, she she brought up some, you know, we need to be te- teaching Emmett Till and Lynchings and KKK. Absolutely. And we need to be teaching all of that. We need to be teaching about Rog- Rosa Parks, and we need to be teaching about the Trail of Tears. And, you know, when I was a kid, my parents would take us down to Cherokee and we learned about, we got to see the play that the Cherokee put on about about their uh about the people and and what what they went through um and how there was betrayal and they were sent on the Trail of Tears. And and absolutely, we need to be teaching that. Um, and fully support that, and and that is imperative. But what I don't support is what some people have taken culturally responsive practices to mean. And it's been some really horrible stuff that I have seen myself as a parent, as a parent and as a school board member. Lessons and trainings that pit people against one another because of the color of their skin. People being judged solely because of the color of their skin and how they were born. And I can't support that. I I have lots of examples. I'm not gonna waste the time and go into it all tonight. If 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 I'm challenged on it, I I absolutely will. I've got all all the paperwork here and I can I can spend a couple hours talking about it. But it's here. It's here in our division. It's in our classrooms, whether it was intentional or not. Um, it's coming down from the VDOEs, a lot of the trainings that that we advertise to our staff. It's it's there. It's it's some really repulsive stuff. Um, Dr. Parrot said in one of our meetings that our community members, teachers, and board need to understand what privilege is. Privilege is the rights you have solely because of the color of your skin. I strongly disagree with that. My rights come from God. And my parents will attest that we certainly did not have privilege based upon the color of our skin. That is not what we should be teaching and training our children for, and that's the purpose of this resolution. Or that's 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 the purpose of why I'm supporting it. Um, I also very much disagree with the statement that we should ever take parents out of the equation when we're considering something. And um I think it's imperative that parents are at the forefront of it. Not not down here below the students or or anybody else, administration. Parents are up here at the top. Parents are ultimately the ones responsible for what is taught to their children, and they need to know what's being taught to their children. And that's another purpose of this resolution. Um, yes, we, I am concerned about the teacher shortage, and I have spoken to many, 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 many teachers who do not like what they're being told, th- the trainings that they've had to participate in, things that they're being told that they have to teach. Whether, again, it came from administration or not. That's an, that's another reason why I want that clarity in this resolution. Because I'm not saying it came from administration. Um. This is about unity for me. This is about bringing our community together because it's extremely divided right now. And for me, I I don't, I I don't understand how anyone can be against any of these items in in here that any race is inherently superior, inferior, or of any other race. Um, I I just, I don't understand, and and I just want to thank Ms. Weems. Um, this was not the original resolution that came forward, and, you know, I wish there were, there was some other language in here that was in there originally, and um Ms. Weems put forth so much time and effort to try to get consensus around this and to bring unity and to bring unity to this board on this topic. And I just want to thank her and and Ms. Franklin for for your work on this. Um, and uh I I just, there's so much so much going on out there that we need to clarify, and I think that this brings clarity to it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Hughes.
I agree that parents need to know what their children are being taught. But they should not be misled about what their children are taught. And that's what has happened. That's why there's, they were here tonight. That's, many of those parents that were here tonight had the conception that we are teaching critical race theory. So first of all, critical race theory, CRT, is a framework and an analytical tool primarily used in university-level courses. Critical race theory is not a part of our social studies curriculum and has never been a part of social studies curriculum in Virginia. Teaching social studies and history will at times require discussion about historic instances of racism. So this in turn often prompts student questions and requests for additional discussion on how some elements of history continue to play out in our communities today. The community has been talking about CRT, but they've been misled because media channels and members of the public, even some members of our board, have been compu- confusing some key terms. And it's important to note that the terms critical race theory and educational equity are not the same and shouldn't be used interchangeably. CRT, which is a tool primarily used in institutions of higher education, that's not what we're talking about. But educational equity is a K through 12 term referring to federal and state policies and requirements. Specifically, the term is closely associated with no child left behind. No child left behind legislation that was led by former President George Bush and signed into law in two thousand and two. This resolution will tie the hands of our teachers and prohibit them from actually teaching and having frank discussions about a very sad part of our country's past, several parts of our country's past. The discussions that need to happen as teachers explain and teach about slavery, civil rights, Jim Crow laws, et cetera, will not be able to take place if teachers can't talk about the privileged and oppressive behavior of slaveholders of the past. Implicit bias is something else that needs to be explained to our students as they ask questions about the society of today and why there are racial tensions in our society sometimes. I mean, we can't deny that there are racial, there are racial tensions. Sometimes they boil over into high emotions. We can't deny that. It happens. And students have questions about it. The whole bottom half of this resolution, where it starts with now therefore be it resolved, is written in a negative tone. But teachers have to be able to teach what inherently racist means. I don't think it's possible to teach about why this country allowed slavery, Jim Crow laws, segregated schools, segregated restaurants and restrooms, as well as separate bus seats for people of color. You can't teach about that. You can't talk about those things without teaching about that. And this resolution states that they are not allowed to teach it. I know that you that you're saying that's not what you mean, but that's not what this resolution says. If a teacher teaches students the reason that those things took place, in fact, that teacher would have to be very careful and might even be accused of going against this policy because of the way it's written. A teacher can't even teach what racism is without going against this policy. Therefore, I cannot support this resolution because of the way it ties the hands of our teachers to teach and explain several of the prohibited topics in the bottom half of this resolution. And I know, Ms. Weems, you tried very hard to write it so that it wouldn't tie the hands of our teachers, but the way this is written, because here's what it says. It says any school-based program, activity, or entity that is operated, controlled, paid for, or under the jurisdiction of the school board shall refrain from training, teaching, or promoting the following to students and employees. Now, I realize that you're saying, what you're saying here, I think what you're saying means you don't want teachers promoting those things. But if they have to teach it, they have to teach it. And in the in the course of discussions, it could be construed by somebody somewhere who says, my teacher was teaching me about this, so guess what? All of a sudden, we have somebody rushing to the superintendent saying, the teacher was teaching about racial, what what it means to have um implicit bi- bias. What it means to have um racial injustice. My teacher was explaining to us today, the child might say, that some people were have dark-colored skin and therefore they had masters who controlled them because the masters were white and felt that they were inherently privileged. They were inherently racist. But how does a teacher teach about these things? How do they teach it? But your resolution basically prohibits teachers from teaching this and actually delving into and having frank conversations with students. And so I don't like the way this ties the hands of teachers because they have to be able to teach about these things. We can't say that these things didn't happen in our society, in our world. All of these things happened, and you have to be able to explain it thoroughly to students and teach them about it. Even though you might not be teaching them to do it or teaching them that they are superior in some way. But you have to be able to teach about it and explain to them and have frank conversations. And I just, I feel like this this actually ties the hands of our teachers and and they they would have to be super, super careful. And then, like I said, they did, then they would have to defend themselves and how they how they had the lesson and how they taught the lesson. They would have to be go on defense about it. So I I just, I don't think the way this is written would would be a good um policy to adopt for our school division.
All right, we have Mrs. Hughes, and if we could first, uh, Ms. Owens has not spoken yet. Is it okay, Mrs. Weems, if we put her next after that? Okay.
So I'd like to first say that um both Ms. Anderson and Ms. Melnick, I believe, are um not not presenting this resolution and that they're misrepresenting the character of the resolution. It does not say not to teach history. Um, and I think most of us agree that diversity is important and all things should be taught. Some of the, some of the examples, though, that I've heard throughout the night here that don't make any sense to me. We had students, I I heard at least four people's names pronounced incorrectly. Only one person said, you pronounced it incorrectly be- because you're ignorant. She was taught that. None of, none of the other people did. She was taught that it was ignorant or that it was a microaggression. I think my last name is pretty easy. It gets mispronounced sometimes. I don't consider it a microaggression. Um, the young lady who was asked whether or not she was in the IB program. If the IB programs at Princess Anne and you're meeting someone for the first time, you may ask, are you in this program or not? Um, as far as somebody asking you, where are you from? This is the largest military installation in the world. I ask people all the time where they're from if I don't know they're from here. Frankly, I find it interesting. I find people who look just like me that I ask them where they're from because they're not from here. We are hearing from teachers. We're hearing from teachers pro and con on this issue. Um, and and this is gonna get pushed harder because the majority of the board's gonna vote against this, so this is gonna fail. I mean, that's abundantly clear already. And you're gonna have teachers that are gonna quit because of it. And if you pass it, you might have teachers quit because of that also, but you have some on both sides of this issue. And and something else I'd like to address since the uh topic of parents came up. Teachers, school teachers are very important, but parents are the primary and most important teachers that their children will ever have. You are your child's first teacher. You are your child's most important. You are your child's first teacher. You are your child's most important teacher. And cutting parents out of the equation is, is inexcusable. And we even saw tonight a speaker get, the video went off because she was showing illustrations from books that we have in our library. That cuts parents out. We, whoever shut that off did not want parents to see what is available to their children here. We had somebody cut off from, from quoting books we have in our library. If it's available to children, it's not inappropriate to say here, but we don't want parents to know that. These are all ways of cutting parents out of that equation. We shouldn't be hiding anything. We should be inviting parents in. We should be celebrating diversity. And we need to quit feeling that every question is some kind of microaggression. You can't say, "Let's all learn about each other and celebrate each other and then be offended by every question that you get." People are trying to learn about you. That is the best lesson in diversity there is. People from different walks of life getting to know each other on a personal level.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Okay, I, I'll be as brief as I can. I do have, uh, a couple of issues with both the wording of, um, a couple of pieces on, on the resolution and the need for it in general. But, um, I wanted to point out just a couple of them so that it's understood kind of where, where some of the concerns were. For me, uh, the fourth, uh, whereas paragraph reads really concerning to me. Um, the second line there, and I'll just give the example. If we have a teacher or staff member who decides to study and be part of the Ku Klux Klan and they are at a Klan meeting and they are seen there and somebody photographs them and is concerned, they bring it to the attention of the school board and says, "I'm concerned about this person being around our students, what they're bringing to the, the table." They are openly in a Klan and, in, in the Klan and they, they have racist views and participate in Klan activities. We are gonna then turn around and look at the resolution that we passed, which says that we acknowledge we can't limit or discourage, can't discourage employees from researching, discussing, exploring, doing all these things for any materials related to racial issues that divide. We just ask that they do it on their own time and not on our school board property. That's what I would look at if I was that teacher who we're questioning. You wrote it in here. You said I can do it. You don't even discourage it. That's concerning to me. I don't know that we needed to put that wording in a resolution. Uh, down where, uh, we get to the ABCs, I do, the letter B that talks about, uh, virtue of race or, uh, inherent privilege or oppressed and conscious or unconsciously. Implicit bias exists. It's implicit bias is a psychological, uh, phenomenon. They study it. I, we can have different beliefs on whether we believe implicit bias exists or not. I will tell you that I, I believe it exists. I participate in counseling theory. I participate in trauma-informed practice, which would tell us that implicit bias exists. Not just for race, for all kinds of things. There's implicit bias on how people feel about a certain gender. There's implicit bias that goes with age. There's implicit bias with all things. And so then to say that it exists everywhere but not with race, that people can't have unconscious bias for race, but we know it exists in all other things. You know, I, needless to say, I would, um, I would say that I clearly can't get behind this. I hear, uh, people telling, uh, students how they should feel or how they shouldn't feel. Um, I'm sure that they're used to that. That's probably happened their whole life for them, for other people to tell them how they should feel and when they should feel it and how they should interpret microaggressions against them. Hearing, you know, we are better off than, than we were. Yeah, we are better off as a society than we were in slavery and at the civil rights mov- movement. And at the civil rights movement, they were also better off than they were in slavery. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to have those conversations. And I, I'm concerned about any, uh, resolution that would shut down the conversations. Yeah, we need to have boundaries and limitations and, uh, respect and understanding. That's what academics is about, is being able to learn from each other and have critically thinking conversations in class. Whether, you know, students bring things up. I want our, our staff to know how to navigate those conversations in a way that's gonna be respectful and doesn't have to shut students down. So for those, in addition to some other reasons, I, I'm not in support of this right now. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Franklin.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I thought I made, I thought that we made this really simple. Um, and, and already two or three of our board members are talking about CRT, critical race theory, critical race theory. It's not mentioned in here. The reason why it's not mentioned in here because that was so complicated. And like one said, some people narrowly define it. Some people put everything, you know, in the kitchen sink in it. So I don't know why we're talking about critical race theory right here with this. Um, it, this does not limit teaching history. We have some horrific history. I have kids that have gone through this system and one graduated not too long ago. I've got a ten-year-old in this system. Just last week, my ten-year-old came home and they were discussing who they wanted to meet. I think it was who they wanted to meet. And she was telling me that one of her classmates wanted to meet Rosa Parks. And that they had this long discussion and then how horrible it was that people, you know, had to sit somewhere and drink from certain fountains. And my other kids, they, they, they learned about the Civil War. They learned why the Civil War, you know, happened. They were learning how horrific slavery was. Um, in third grade, um, two years ago, my, my granddaughter, they were talking about the Indians, because that's part of that curriculum. And I believe it's second or third grade. I'm pretty sure it was third grade. And, um, how awful they were treated. And she actually did a report on the, on the, um, the Trail of Tears and was able to present it and talk about that. This is not limiting discussion. I don't, I don't, I don't know what, I, I'm not sure which bullet would, A, races, a race is inherently superior to another one. I don't know how that limits discussion or teaching history. That any individual, because of his race or skin color, is inherently, that means permanently, permanently racist, privileged, or oppressive, permanently. Inherently means permanently. That any individual bears responsibility for actions committed, the, the horrible actions committed in our history, that you bear responsible, the responsibility now because of your skin color. That your mo- moral character is determined by skin color. That the United States is fundamentally and inherently, that means permanently racist. And the capitalism, I don't know how any of these limit teaching history. I don't know what resolution y'all are reading. Uh, I, it, I mean, those are real easy. It does not limit discussion. It does not limit teaching history, the good, the bad, the ugly. We've been teaching the good, the bad, the ugly. I sure hope my kids have gotten it. I hope other third and fourth graders and middle school and high schoolers have gotten it. This does not in any way limit or tie the hands of teachers. Again, I don't know, I don't know what you're reading. Um, the top part, whereas, the, the fourth one. Um, yeah, I would like teachers, you know, to, to study uplifting, very positive things on their off time. But again, we can't limit. And actually, you know, I think that we had a book study and I think someone did, um, pull a book or pause a book that teachers were, were reading. So, I mean, that's precedence that somebody did do that. Um, so again, A, B, C, D, E, F, I have no idea how that can be interpreted as tying a teacher's hands not to teach history. I don't know how that can be interpreted, that this is a CRT resolution and people have been misinformed about CRT and CRT, 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 CRT. This doesn't have CRT in it. It doesn't have it in it. So I don't know what resolution that y'all are reading. But I, and, and we're not gonna agree, so I'm done talking. I think this is helpful. I think it's a guideline. I, it does not limit. It is not talking about the confusing concepts of CRT here or there. And, um, and it still respects diversity and it still respects and doesn't do anything to our equity policy. So I don't know how it got derailed to start talking about you can't teach history and CRT when this resolution says nothing about it either.
Okay, before we get into seconds, um, well, uh, I haven't spoken either, but I, we, okay, we have Mrs. Franklin and Mrs. Melnick and then Dr. Spence.
Um, actually, I, I'm, I'm okay to wait until everyone has a chance. Go ahead, Ms. Ray.
Now, I believe Dr. Spence is next.
Well, I, I mean, I raised my hand because I, um, because Mrs. Williams raised a good question and I think it's one we need to talk about. From the administrative perspective, what happens if you pass a resolution is then we have to figure out, because this is sort of a directive guideline type resolution, not a celebrating a month resolution. How do we operationalize this? And, and who becomes the arbiter of it? Um, which I guess ultimately is me because any violation of it gets mentioned, uh, gets reported to me or my designee. And then we try to figure out what to do with it. And, and, and so then I have to think about, okay, how do I or my designee arbitrate the allegation of a violation of the resolution? And so I do look at some of the language, Mrs. Williams, and I have questions about it. So I'm gonna sort of ask the questions that I have, right? So, a- and, and let me say this first of all, I, I think I had very good conversation with Ms. Franklin about this, a couple of different w- ways and dimes. And I appreciate, um, very much the, what the expressed intent of it is. My, my challenge is the unintended consequences of it. And I think that's where I, I, I have questions. Um, and I do appreciate taking CRT out because I, I think that is such a misunderstood. And it gets conflated with so many things, right? And so I would have had way more questions, but if it was still in, like, does that mean we, we, we no longer teach SCL or incorporate that into our curriculum, that sort of thing? Um, so the one that, that's been pointed out a couple of times, it says that, uh, teachers should not discuss, explore media publications or materials related to racial issues that divide rather than seek unity. They can't do that. So I, I assume one might reasonably interpret that if I'm a member of the public, if I'm a parent, to say, "Well, a teacher cannot discuss any thing related to racial issues that seek rather than to divide." They can't discuss it. They can't explore that wi- in my child's classroom. It can't be discussed in my child's classroom. It can't be done. So, so two things that come up with that, the, the first question I have is who, who's the arbiter of divide rather than seek unity? Because that is, uh, I think that is a huge challenge in our society right now, right? Of like, who determines whether or not something that's been written is seeking to divide or seeking to build unity? Because I think there's like multiple perspectives on any, anytime, you know, something gets written, somebody says, "Well, you're just trying to divide us by race." And other people say, "No, we're trying to generate understanding so we can become more unified." And that's, that's a legitimate difference of opinion on how you interpret something. But, you know, it says that. And so then how do you, how do you figure it out that? So, I mean, I'll give you the example. You know, Mrs. Manning sent me a, an email the other day. It was asking, she'd gotten a, 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 I think a screenshot of a, a Facebook post that was used in a Kellam High School classroom. And the person who'd sent it wasn't a parent, wasn't a student. They just sent it to her and they said, "This seems unnecessarily divisive." So there's the word divisive. So that, their interpretation was that was a, a material that sought to divide. And I would think then under this resolution that, that may not be allowed in the classroom. And I, and I, I understood the language of it. May, some people might find troubling. I mean, there wasn't profane language, but it certainly, you know, it's, it was a black person's perspective on taking a walk in their neighborhood. And on the things they were thinking about is they were taking a walk in their neighborhood. And, and, and they made comments about how they have to think about being deferential to white people when they're taking a walk in their neighborhood. So I was asked the question, "Is that acceptable?" I mean, in essence, I was at, being asked, "How would you arbitrate this policy with this piece of writing being used in a classroom?" I didn't have the context at that time and I'm not sure we've nailed it down, but my guess is it was because it was talking about an author's perspective of their experience, their lived experience related to a piece of literature they were also reading, which was having the same conversation. So, you know, is that a bad thing for children to read about another person's lived experience? And is that divisive? Or is it helpful for children, and these are high school students, these aren't, you know, second graders, to be thinking about the lived experience of, of a black man in his community who's talking as himself? I mean, he's not, I don't think intentionally trying to, he's just like, "This is how I feel." And to, and to think about that and does that generate conversations that are helpful or harmful, you know? And so who arbitrates that? So that is i- i- part of the issue, I think, relative to that piece right there. I mean, I, I really, I, I worry. I think I sent Ms. Franklin a list of other books I would be really concerned that teachers might not be able to discuss in class based on that. I don't, that is not your intention. I know that. I do know that. But I have to operationalize it as an administrator. But, you know, you read The Hate U Give in class as a literature selection in class. Is, is that a book that can't be discussed because it explores racial issues and someone might interpret that as being a divisive book? So, so how do I arbitrate that? When, when a parent says, "I can't believe based on this resolution that you've got a teacher letting kids read The Hate U Give. What are you gonna do about it? When are you gonna fire that teacher?" And I can't, I, I don't, I know that's not your intention, but it's the position you're putting our teachers in. And I, that's what I think other people are trying to say. And I don't think, and I don't, and I know it's not what you meant. And if you get into the individual bullets under that first resolution, uh, that first, you know, any school-based program or, or entity, activity that's operated, controlled, paid for, shall refrain from training, teaching, or promoting the following. On the surface of that, I wouldn't argue with any of those. I wouldn't argue with any of those as being things like, "You shouldn't say that as an absolute," right? Who's the arbiter of this conversation? Let me ask you a question. Can a teacher, once, if this resolution is passed, ask the question in their class, "Is capitalism racist?" And have that conversation? I mean, it's a legitimate question that I think our teachers are gonna ask. Can I t- can I ask that question? Is capitalism racist? Because this is, I can't teach it. And teaching is not indoctrination. So that's another problem I have is that a lot of people think teaching is indoctr- teaching, I mean, there are certain things in math, one plus one equals one. And, and when I tell you one plus one equals, excuse me, equals two. Thank you. It doesn't, equals two. I understand, yeah. That's why I'm a superintendent, not an engineer. So, you, you know, I mean, one plus one equals two. That's the rule. It's a steadfast rule. It's, it's hard and it's in place. And, you know, that's, okay, we're gonna indoctrinate you into the rules of math. Although we also try very hard to let you think about how to solve math problems without having to get to the answer the same way. We, we do things like Math Congress, right? And so, so we, there, there are just, there are nuances to these things. So you say, "Sure, you could, you could ask the question, 'Is capitalism racist?' But somebody, I promise you, with this resolution at hand is gonna say, "How dare you talk about that? Your resolution literally says you can't teach about capitalism as racist." And the teacher would say, "I'm not teaching that. I'm asking students to think about that." By looking at the history of the, the development of social classes in, in, in America and our classes, under our capitalist system and the history of the development of social classes in England and the Industrial Revolution. And, and how that creates haves and have-nots. And are there disparate communities impacted by that? And what do they look like? And can we have those conversations and not tell a kid, "You have to think this, that capitalism is racist," but tell a kid, "Look at all these different perspectives and tell me what you think." And I, and then I know that there is a concern that some teachers will go in and say, "But you have to think this way." Well, we have policies that cover that. And that would be my next point, right? Like, so we have policies that cover that. You say, "Well, you, you can't go in and say that." Well, right. You can't go in and say that. Because we have controversial issues policies. And I want to make sure our public hears what this is. Here's definition. A controversial issue may be the following. Any problem that society is in the process of debate- Here's definition, a controversial issue may be the following, any problem that society is in the process of debating. Any problem for which one, more than one solution is supported. And any issue that may arouse strong emotions. They can be a part of the instructional program when they're germane to the subject being taught and after considerations been given to the age and maturity of the students. And here's the rights of the students under this policy. Students shall have the right to study at the level appropriate to their age controversial issues germane to course objectives, including but not limiting to those that have political, economic, social, scientific, or moral significance. They shall have the right to have free access to major ideas and information related to the topic. And importantly, to the question of do teachers drive this stuff home? To study under qualified instructors in an atmosphere free from bias, prejudice, and intimidation, and to form and express opinions on controversial issues without jeopardizing their relation with the teacher of the school. And here's the responsibility of the teacher. In discussing controversial issues, the teacher shall keep in mind that the classroom is a forum and not a committee for producing resolutions or dogmatic pronouncements. The class should feel no responsibility for reaching an agreement. The teacher has the responsibility to bring out the major facts concerning controversial questions. The approach of the teacher has to be impartial and objective and include balanced assignments of materials. So my perspective would be, if we have an issue that comes up, a horrible, you know, lesson that comes up, let's deal with it in policy. Because this creates, you know, is going to create, whether or not we want it to, I, I promise you as an educator. And, and, and I recognize the value as a parent of parents. I recognize the value of all of you as a school board. I'm a professional educator. I've been doing this for 30 years and I'm telling you as an educator, that's how this is going to get interpreted. And that's why I'm asking the question. So can I, I, I ask, can, can a teacher ask, is capitalism racist? Can a teacher ask about whether or not the United States is a racist country? Or what if they just post it differently? Does racism, is racism a big problem in the United States today? Am I now going to have somebody in hand going, you can't do that? I don't want you talking about racism. It makes me uncomfortable. It makes my kid uncomfortable. And I know that's not, Ms. Weems, I know, I promise you, I'm not saying that's your intention. Because I know it's not. And, and Ms., and Ms. Owen's brought up the issue of bias. And I know that's not what this says. And again, I don't, on the surface of, and none of these should be taught as absolutes. But I do promise you, somebody's going to have to arbit, be arbitrate, can these conversations even take place? And, and from an administrative perspective, that's going to be a real challenge for us. And, um, I think ultimately, w- we are, I mean, I would just, at least from my perspective, say that we already have policy that tackles, that tackles that. And, um, you know, where these things are happening, I mean, I, I've heard over and over again, two things. I know there's m- more, uh, because we're a big school division and we teach tens of thousands of lessons a day. And these things are going to happen, um, that we have a way and means for addressing those things without assuming that this is just some sort of like left-wing indoctrination that we've just grabbed onto and decided to all of a sudden make happen in our schools. That we're out to shame white children and make people feel ashamed of their, because that's just not reality. And I don't care what anybody accuses me of. That's not reality. And if you don't, and if you don't, like me, and you think that I'm this left-wing person who's shoving this stuff down people's throats, what do you think about our teachers? Because I don't think our teachers are doing this. You know, writ large across 5,000 classrooms, I don't think our teachers are doing this. And if, if you're saying this is what's happening in our schools, then what you're saying is that this is what our teachers are doing. And I don't, I don't want that to be the message that our teachers hear in this moment either. So I just felt it was really important that I share my perspective from an administrative perspective of why I'm challenged by this resolution because I'm not sure how I'm going to enforce it. And because they're going to come to me with the problems, and I know this, we all know this. If all you have is a hammer, everything's a nail. So if I'm going to see these things, then I'm going to start swinging my hammer. And I don't think that puts our teachers in a tenable position.
Mrs. Weems, you wanted to?
I just wanted, I said.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go, yeah, I, I was going to, he asked me a question. I was going to respond, but y'all go ahead and speak first, first whoever.
Mrs. Melnick and then Mrs. Franklin?
I just, I don't always find the need to do this, but I do want to circle back around and, and clarify one point. I was not asking to minimize parental involvement. I was saying, let's separate just for a moment so I could concentrate on two students that came and spoke. I was an incredibly involved parent. I will never forget the book, The K, in Susie Metzger's sixth grade class with Andrew. Or reading The Odyssey with Madeline. Or Frankenstein with Grant. And the list goes on. I'm, I'm a better person, I'm a better student now than I ever was. I'm also going to thank the list of books that was published. This was on it. I've ordered all of the books that were on that list. This is the first one that came. This is one of the most amazing books I've ever read. It was an easy read. There's a picture on, on every page. And this book is a gift. And everyone should read this book. Why this made it on the list, I don't know. It's, I guess, going to go through the vetting process because somebody did complain about it and that's what should happen. It should go through the vetting process. I hope nothing happens with that, but this book is amazing. And so I think, I think that, I thank you for that. And to this day, I still ask my children, my boys are still in college. And when they have to read a book, I still to this day say, do you want me to read it too? It's how we talk. It's how we discuss. It's how we learn. And it's how I learn a perspective from people who are younger from me, than me. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mrs. Franklin?
Thank you. And you know what? I, I gotta tell you, just listening to the discussion on this has just been interesting because it's, to me, all of us are trying to express our opinion. And to be quite honest with you, it's, it, it's kind of a little eye-opening. Um, just in the sense that the intent, you know, and I, I said this the last meeting, we, we judge other, ourselves by intent and others by their actions. And, um, and I think, and I just want you to know that this was out of good intent. I mean, it's, it, it, it's troubling to me that, that it's viewed differently because I can tell you just from Mrs. Weems and I, it wa, this was not the intent at all. It, it really wasn't, and I, I just want people to know that. Um, and I also want people to know, I just want to kind of respond to Ms. Melnick because I absolutely loved having those two ladies here this, this, you know, today. I, I, I respect their opinion. It, I definitely do. And I, I was not saying that because I disagree with them, that I, I want to silence their voice, not at all. I love that they are doing so well. I love that they are, they felt compelled to speak. And, you know, I just want to say that, you know, there was a comment about my, you know, I, I don't even take it as an offense. It's, it's funny. Sometimes, you know, people are more offended for me than I am. Um, but, you know, when people ask me where are they from, I, they definitely are asking me where I'm from because they stand there and wait for a different response. So the fact that they, that they, that, that people want to say, you should assume that they're asking you like what's, that's not, that's not what's happening. And actually, some of these conversations in here, um, have made me thought. I really have done a lot of, of research just in terms of talking to people. I, I've talked to people in Kempsville because I represent that community. I really wanted to make sure that I got their opinions. Uh, and, you know, of course, I, I represent Virginia Beach. I know I'm going to give responses about that. But, um, but I, you know, I live in Kempsville, so it's easy for me to, to ask questions. And I, I really feel like I was reflecting the thoughts because I did not go and say, I want you to, I want you to look at this a certain way. I want you to, you know, I want you to feel a certain way about this. I asked them, do you find anything troubling nor misleading about this? Um, and they said, no, it sounds like we're trying to, you know, and of course, not everybody. I don't want to say everybody. But, um, you know, I felt like I was taking people's opinions into, into account. And so I, first of all, again, I want to thank everybody for their feedback. I think that this is wonderful. And people that get frustrated about this discussion is exactly the reason why that we, sometimes I feel like we've got to have these, these conversations because if we're having these conversations here, these conversations should be had everywhere. Um, and, uh, and I, and I'm not afraid to have those conversations. So, um, you know, I, I do want, I, Dr. Spence, I don't want to put you in a position where you can't, um, operationalize that. I, I never want to set you up for failure, for sure. I think that this is something that we, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I look forward to the, the, the equity, um, policy review that comes out on the 28th. I hope that we can make some kind of, um, policy adjustments. You had, Dr. Spence, you had discussed that policy and perhaps that policy should definitely, um, I, I think some things need to be put in policy as well. For example, I mean, it, with that, that, um, that, uh, policy that, you know, about controversial issues, I, I, I think that perhaps we do need it to go a little bit higher for you to review those things, um, before they're put out there as, or one of your designees. Um, and, and I, that, I knew that Ms., uh, Ms. Rigs is going to look at that, so thank you. But, um, I just want to, I just want to kind of clarify because the intent of this resolution was never to minimize, to, to push down. And whether, whether you vote for it or not, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that that is not where, where it came from and, and please just remember that. And I hope that this leaves us better and not worse for having this discussion, so.
Okay, and Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, so I, I find this to be extremely clear, um, that, you know, we're going to refrain from teaching or training or promoting that any race is inherently superior or inferior. That any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color is inherently racist. We're saying that that should not be taught as fact. And so, uh, to me, this is extremely clear. I, I understand the concerns that, that Ms. Owens had. And, you know, I, I never really liked that, the, it, the exact language and item, the fourth whereas anyway. Um, and if, and if that's, uh, of concern to Ms. Owens, uh, you know, I would be happy for us to get rid of that. So, um, I would like to make an amendment to the resolution that we take out the fourth whereas, the entire part. Whereas the school board recognizes that individual and group perspectives on equity may differ just, um, in that full paragraph there. So that, you know, I mean, I think just by policy and law, I mean, people can do what they want on their own time anyway. Um, this was just kind of, I think, I anticipate the Ms. Weems reason, Ms., Ms. Franklin is to just basically state, hey, we're not trying to tell you what you can do in your own time. I think that was the intent of that. Um, so if, if that's causing some divide, um, so I'll like to make that amendment if anybody would like to support that.
All right, so we'll continue discussion with that amendment on the floor. Okay.
So, um, since we're focusing, focus, focusing on the meaning or not of these, they're not bullets, they're letters. But Dr. Spence, I, I go back to, and I'm, I'm sorry?
Well, we need to speak on the amendment now that the amendment's on the floor, so did you want to go ahead and vote on that or?
Oh, all right, I guess, um, does everybody understand what we're voting? Just to vote on?
Just to remove the fourth whereas paragraph.
Right, all in favor, show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we are missing one school board member. Did you want to wait for a second or did you want to do the vote?
I guess we should wait, okay.
Yeah, I, wh- while we're waiting, we don't want to have, you know, God forbid we sit in silence for 30 seconds, right? Yeah, I mean, that was the intent because after a group of our teachers had a book study, we wanted to make sure that our teachers know that we are not limiting them to, you know, study or get together or do anything, you know, in their off time. So our intent was actually for that to be helpful to teachers. Um, it wasn't, that, that part wasn't meant to be in the classroom. That was what they do on their own time. Because there was a lot of conversation about that book study. So we wanted to ensure the teachers that we're not going to, you know, decide what they do on their own time. But I totally agree to that. I, I really didn't like the language either. But while we were going through this and changing it, I, it got in there. And so I totally support that leaving out that one, fourth whereas.
Yeah, Mrs. Rigs, a proposal now to consider a revised resolution that would eliminate the fourth whereas. Did I state that correctly?
Yeah, that was an amendment and seconded, so now we're voting on the, just the amendment to remove the fourth whereas. That paragraph.
All in favor, show a raised hand.
So the people that have a problem with it still want it?
You, you still want it in there?
Y'all confused me. We're already voting on it, so. That was only one of the problems.
Okay, we have four ayes.
All opposed?
Oh, my.
Keep the hands up for the nays.
Please, please. In the spirit of compromise, right?
We have seven nays. The motion did not pass.
So we're back to considering the original resolution. So, um, yes, to, to try and wrap this up, uh, for me, the few things I want to comment on, even though most have been touched on already, is that we, we do have a present framework in place with respect to our equity policy, our strategic plan, our graduate of a, profile of a graduate, uh, I'm leaving out a few other things. The quality measures assessment is scheduled for two weeks from tonight. And so for me, I, I do feel I share the same goal as many of you here. And we just may disagree on the means to get there. And for me, there's legitimate rea- reason to wait for this assessment, this consultant assessment. And they will, I assume it will, among other things, analyze the, the frameworks we have in place now. And I want to wait to hear on that, their, the consultant's input and based on public input too, and whether we d- wind up needing more of that. But, so for me, it's a matter of more or less waiting for, for what would be for me very helpful information. Because I think it's clear that we, we've acknowledged from the start when we created, when we've approved the equity policy, that we would have this ass- assessment, that we were recognizing that there most likely are areas that we, we need to improve upon or tweak or develop. So for me, I feel it's, the prudent thing is, is to wait for the assessment report in two weeks. Uh, I, I also just want to say, dating back at least a year ago, six months or a year ago, the Dr. Spence, you were sitting right in that same chair. And I remember you stating, we, and I just am asking you to confirm this, that we don't shame children, it's not our policy to shame children. It's not our policy to teach them that they're oppressors. I mean, am I, just please affirm or is my memory not clear on this?
No, that's correct.
And, and so my point is, this is already, these are already expectations of the division. And so having it here, does it, how does that change the framework? Because we, we've acknowledged that we don't, these are not our expectations. And we want to know if there're, if there's a breach with these expectations. And we have a process, and we do have a process in place which is acknowledged or reiterated here. And we have a superintendent who has stated repeatedly to please bring these to his attention. I, I'm not naive enough to think with all the, the lessons that go on every day that there are not issues. We, and, and I think it's clear that there ha, there are. One of my concerns is many of the examples that we continue to receive are date back six months or 12 months ago. And so I would hope that we're at a point now where with a new school year, i- if there are in fact issues going on in classrooms that are of concern, that parents do bring them to the attention of one of us or to the superintendent. them to the attention of one of us or to the superintendent, because we have that process in place now. So like I said, I, I'm acknowledging that we, we most, you know, we've acknowledged that we have more work to do, and I just personally wanna wait for the, uh, quality measures report in two weeks, and I think we'll, I would be in a bit better position then, and, and maybe some of you as well, to, to work together to figure out what the next steps would be from there. So, I'll leave it at that. Anybody else in the queue? All right then, we, we are voting on the res- the resolution to clarify equity training and teaching, which we have a motion and second on the floor, so all in favor, please show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have four ayes.
All opposed, please show a raised hand.
We have seven nays, the motion did not pass.
Okay, so thank you for the productive discussion and that I do hope that we can continue to work together for a common goal. So committee, organization, or board reports. Who has something to report? Mrs. Weems?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that the CAC is not meeting in October, and, um, their, their next meeting will be in November. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just like to s- I just like to say that I did not report out about the, uh, legislative committee meeting. We met today at two o'clock, and from that meeting, we generated some very fruitful, um, concerns and ideas, and I, I just wanna say that, um, I want to thank my two colleagues for voting me back, Candace Chair of the Legislative Committee, and we had a very, um, fruitful conversation with some of the, uh, legislators gonna go forward, and I think you all are gonna like some of the things that we came up with. Uh, Mrs. Manning brought, brought out a lot of things that would, uh, maybe enhance by our bus drivers and recruiting them and keeping them, so, uh, it's in, it's in the, um, draft form, so when you get it, um, I hope that you're gonna appreciate the work that we put forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Franklin.
Um, we actually had the gifted CAC, uh, Community Advisory Committee meeting, uh, yesterday, and I'm not gonna steal their thunder, cause I know that they're going to be presenting to us, so I'm not gonna steal, but I just wanna, again, uh, compliment, uh, Dr. DeRiz and, uh, I can't ever say her name, Boo Boo, Boo Boo Herop- Heropolis. Um, I used to call her aunt Boo Boo. Um, but, uh, but they are just doing an amazing job, and I, I, I'm looking forward to them presenting, um, their findings and so, but I just wanted to give them a shout out, cause they're doing a great job.
Thank you. And Mrs. Felton again?
Miss, uh, Chair Ryan, I just, I will make a correction. My two committee mi- members on the Legislative Committee is Mrs. Mrs. Riggs and Mrs. Manning, and I didn't point that out, and I called in it, but I just, I just wanna make sure that one knew that. Thank you.
All right, then, I'm, I'm, yes.
I would like to ask for a point of personal privilege, because I feel it is necessary to announce for the record because of some of the comments that are made, have been made tonight. I feel it's necessary to state that I have a personal mass exemption when necessary.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtz. Right, Mrs. Melnick, would you please read the motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board recess into a closed meeting pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one, part A, paragraph one, seven, and eight, as amended for personnel matters. For discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or school, or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals, namely for the purpose of addressing the superintendent's annual goals, and namely to discuss personnel matters related to the status of the cooperative agreement for legal services and the delivery of legal services for the school board and the school division. I made that motion, so I just need a second.
A second? Mrs. Anderson? Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have ten ayes.
Where's Ms. Weems?
Yeah.
Is that an issue?
I didn't think of that.
Well, we already, already read in.
Yeah.
Just go.
Go.
Can you, madam clerk, can we add her, Mrs. Weems' vote to the vote count?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. All right, so now, yes.
decisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the school board meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second, Mrs.?
No, I need a motion.
Oh, a motion, Mrs. Anderson, and second, Mrs. Hughes. All in favor, raised hand, or all approve?
We have a unanimous vote? Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
And this, this meeting is adjourned.
Ooh, it's early.